All right, I'm calling to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the municipality of Anchorage for Monday, February 7th, 2011. If the Secretary will please call a roll.
Nancy Pease?
Here.
Jim Frederick?
Here.
Connie Yoshimura?
Here.
Arthur Eishem?
Here.
Bruce Phelps?
Stacy Dean?
Here.
Carrie Parks?
Dana Cruz?
Here.
Richard Wilson?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the minutes, accept a positive motion. Been moved and seconded by Ms. Yoshimura, seconded by Mr. Frederick.
I move to approve the minutes. I have one small correction on page 21, line 12, from the bottom of the page. That number should be $800,000. We're just missing a couple of zeros.
Which, which, which is...
On the December 6th.
Any other corrections of the minutes? Any objection? And the minutes are approved with that correction to the December 6th. Okay, Ms. Yoshimura, disclosures, please.
Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
Yes, I do. I had communication back and forth with staff on the Lineri Park master plan, and in the course of that, I received an unsolicited email from a friend of mine who explained some of the past park planning history, and I forwarded that to Mr. Eishem and to the staff to let them decide if that should come forward. I can explain it a little bit when I pull that item, but I just wanted to say that I did get an unsolicited email on that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frederick?
Nothing.
Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing.
Chair?
I have nothing.
Ms. Dean? Nothing. Okay. Mr. Cruz?
I may have a, well, I'll bring it up once you guys decide, on G6...
Please turn on your mic.
It is on. Oh, okay. On G6, with the natural resource extraction in the municipality, I own a natural resource extraction facility in the Matsumboro.
Do you, do you, do you have, you have no economic interest in the case before us tonight, however?
No.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that that's a conflict. We actually appreciate the expertise in dealing with situations like this. Does anyone else have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I agree. Okay, I think that this is just a disclosure, not a conflict.
All right. And I would like to also disclose that several years ago, I had a joint venture with Eclutna Inc. called Kempton Park Subdivision, and that I have also, in the past, worked for them as a real estate broker, but I have no financial interest in the case before us this evening.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Yoshimura, if you'd go ahead and deal with these changes we have to make.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to postpone G2 and G5 to date specific, March 7th. This is at the request of both petitioners.
Please push, use the push button. There you go. Is there a second? Any discussion? Any objection? Those two cases, G...
Two and G...
Yeah, G2 and G5 are postponed then until 7 March. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. I accept a positive motion for approval.
Move for approval?
Seconded by Ms. Dean. Is there any ones we wish to pull, Ms. Yoshimura?
Yeah. In the matter of... Mr., Commissioner Parks has requested that we have a public hearing on this matter. I support that request, and I'm making it on behalf of Mr. Parks. This is a very important item for the hillside, and I've also noticed that it has been quite some time, a year to 16 months, since there has actually been an opportunity for the public to participate in this important decision for all of the hillside. So I would request a public hearing, that we pull this and have a public hearing.
Just a second.
Pull it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah. And if, when we do pull this thing, then we're going to have to have a discussion...
Right.
And deal with, have a motion to have a public hearing and so forth. So that's fine. So we're pulling 3A.
Okay.
Any other...
3B.
Ms. Pease, 3B. Any other items to be pulled? Okay, is there any objection then to approving D1, A, B, C, D? Any objection? Okay, those are approved. Then, Ms. Yoshimura, please speak to 3A.
Well, I think this is a very important connection for the hillside. It has been approximately 12 to 16 months since there has been any sort of public input on this matter, and I believe such an important connectivity on the hillside deserves to have a public hearing.
Okay, please press the button for the mover. Okay, been, okay, moved by Ms. Pease, seconded by Mr. Cruz. You wish to...
Yeah, just, I would like to add to that. This, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This is a whole new, there are whole new elements being introduced as part of this project, and the public hasn't had a chance to comment on that. And in fact, I just noticed laid on the table today, comments of Rabbit Creek Community Council, and they actually don't favor the, it appears to me, I just looked very briefly at them, it appears to me they don't favor the intersection solution that the applicant is proposing. So, you know, an intersection on a road of that magnitude is a big deal. And in addition, there were a number of questions about pedestrian connectivity that I raised, some of those I raised with staff today, but we haven't really had it, and Parks got back to me really briefly, but the community needs to be able to look at that, too. And then finally, we still have the problem of the hillside district plan not being available. It's not online, and if you see before you, I asked Sharon, Ms. Ferguson, thank you very much for bringing us these maps, but the maps she laid on the table show that there's a study area for the road connections that this stub road will lead up to. So we need to know what the hillside plan says about that study area, and how likely the roads are to be built with public or private funds. So I think probably having a public hearing would be beneficial, and we need to make sure we have the hillside district plan and enough lead time to answer questions that may arise from how this project fits in with that plan.
Any other comments on 3A? Is there any objection? No objection, and that is approved. So we now are going to have a public hearing on 2010-076. That date to be determined. Okay, Ms. Pease, you pulled 3B.
Yes, I did. That's the Lineri Park master plan, and as I said in disclosures, I had some back and forth emails with the Parks Planner in charge of this, Ms. Suzanne Little, and she answered a lot of my questions. I didn't have a few clarifications, I would call them, not changing the nature of the plan, but just clarifications. And, let's see, I sent those to staff, but I don't know if they were sent to the commission and put on our table, were they?
They were handed out.
Okay, great. So, okay, so if we can just, I should just preface it by saying, one of my concerns was that the little league ballfields were to have a three-month maximum baseball season, and it's been a concern of mine that ballfields in particular, because of their fencing and so forth, don't have any other use. But this is a great solution. They have removable seasonal fencing, so they take the fencing, interior fencing out, and the fields do get other use. The revisions are, I guess, clarifications I'm proposing are on page 18, since we now have the Anchorage Bicycle Plan adopted. I think we should recognize, as stated, underlined, as underlined there. "The Anchorage Bicycle Plan shows a core connection from the Coastal Trail to the Wisconsin Street multi-use path in this area. Four Acre Drive was reconstructed in," and I don't know the exact date, "to include a separated multi-use path that extends almost to the Coastal Trail. Coastal Trail users are encouraged to use Four Acre Drive to access the Coastal Trail at Lineri Park, as this route minimizes potential conflict," I should say, "between, through cyclists and users at Lineri Park." And that all arose because previously bicyclists cut right across Lineri Park, and I was concerned whether the trail could handle that, it's steep and curving as it goes through the park. And Ms. Little said, "Oh, we've got this new idea. Bikers will be encouraged to go around." Well, it's not a new idea, but something they've worked out, but it hasn't explained in the plan. And then likewise, under the actions related to trails, add install signs for cyclists who are accessing or exiting the Coastal Trail to encourage them to use Four Acre Drive rather than cross through the middle of the park. And then there's one more on signage. As Ms. Skanky said, "Wheels yield to heels." Bicyclists are supposed to yield to pedestrians, and so, especially within the park, making that clear by adding signage at the primary gateways of the park should alert cyclists to slow their speeds and yield to other users while on trails within Lineri Park." So that's kind of the whole topic of making sure that the bike routes are acknowledged Shall I continue?
I think so.
Okay. The next sort of little topic was, looking at page 2, there's a map of the context of parks in northwest Anchorage, and then it talks about, it labels a number of parks, but not all of them are community use parks. And Ms. Little provided some clarification. I reordered her, I mean, I, you know, I refined it just a little bit, but she provided the substance of this. And it clarifies that there are three other community use parks. Some of these other lands shown are not community use parks, but then it adds a statement that it doesn't necessarily appear that the area is underserved by community use parks, but just because this is a park right within a neighborhood, it has a different use pattern, or an intensive use pattern. So there's no change to the substance, just clarification, because all those parks are shown, but they're not all community parks. And then two more changes on page 19. One's very simple. They talk about an eroded desire line, and what they mean is just a shortcut. It's very minor, but strange wording. And then finally, I sort of wasn't comfortable with the sentence that starts at the bottom of page 19 and goes up to the top, which says that they, the community council might be interested in procedures that allow preferential permitting, by which the Ternigan neighborhood can have ease of access to their park. And I just wanted to be careful that we not give the impression that any park is reserved for any particular residence group. So I asked Ms. Little what she thought about that, and she came up with a sentence that's more or less the one I proposed, which is the, to take out the sentence that says that the permit system maybe should have booking to allow the neighborhood to use the space without restrictions, and put in the sentence, "The Anchorage Parks and Recreation Department will limit the issuance of permits as detailed below to allow more opportunity for spontaneous use by individuals and families wherever they may reside." So as opposed to saying, "Allow the neighborhood to use the space without restriction," this just says, "Let's allow unscheduled use and for individuals and families, but wherever they may reside." Makes it clear that there's not a preference given based on where you live.
Okay, so as I see it, you've got three, four changes on page 19. Some of them are as small as just a single word.
Right.
And then one change on page 18, and then a change to page 3.
Yes.
Okay. And those are all contained on this email.
Right. And actually, if possible, I don't know, you know, how hard it is to manipulate the graphics at this point, but I don't think I saw Four Acre Drive labeled. It's not labeled on page 25, which is the main map. So if you're going to reference the access via Four Acre Drive, it'd be nice to at least put some arrow pointing to where Four Acre Drive comes into the Coastal Trail, and that's mentioned there on the email I sent around. Page 25, master plan for, map for future conditions.
I have a question of staff in regards to this master plan. Now, is this still in draft format, or is this final and you're asking approval?
Final.
Okay, so we're forcing some changes into it. Okay, Ms. Pease, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I move approval of the changes that I've printed and distributed to, just clarify a couple of things in the plan, and I, clarify a few things in the plan.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Okay, Ms. Pease, let's, I bet you better go ahead and discuss this a little bit more so we really understand what we're doing.
Well, first, I guess, if this is final, then why are we approving it? Because I spent a lot of time and used a lot of staff time going back and forth on these comments without any information given to me that it was final.
Please come to the podium.
Who are you?
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Suzanne Little. I'm the senior Parks Planner with the Parks Department. This is as final as it can get without being approved by you all, so that was the answer.
Ah, okay.
Well...
Go ahead, Ms. Yoshimura.
I guess, I hate to be repetitive, but have we had an opportunity to see this plan in draft form?
No. I mean, this is, this is your opportunity. It has come before the Parks and Recreation Commission twice, and they've seen it and approved it. It's been approved by the local community councils.
Well, I guess what I want to say is, the Planning and Zoning Commission is not a rubber stamp, and what we would like to, and I can only speak for myself at this particular point in time, but we've had this discussion before on other matters, and what we would like to see are drafts coming before us so that we can have some input, like Ms. Pease has provided us this evening. It is very difficult for us to sit here and look at something that is in full color and printed, and quite frankly, decide to make changes. So we would like, and I would ask other commissioners to comment about this, we would like to be more involved in the process itself.
The only copies that are available are the ones that we printed for this hearing. So it's not a problem for us to make changes at this point. It's not, it's not an issue from the Parks Department's perspective.
So this is, this is really a final draft, then? Okay, Ms. Pease?
Okay, speaking to my motion, I appreciate the fact that the community council apparently spent months working on this. I think probably they have a really good understanding of their problems, and they've worked out, I shouldn't say their problems, their challenges, because it's a much-loved park, and the community's invested a lot of time and creativity and labor in it. So I have, I have faith that this is, you know, quite a, almost complete plan, but I did pick up on a couple of things, and I think that's our job, in particular with the inner overlap with the bike plan, or how does the bike plan affect this? And I think it is important to note what's kind of a change in bike use through this area. It used to be right through Lineri Park. That's still a very visible connection on the map, but that's not the desired connection. So I think we need, now that we have a bike master plan, and we have upgrades to bike facilities in the area, we want to clarify how that works. And the other change, which I think is important, is, you know, I understand that this neighborhood feels very attached to this park and invests in it heavily, but I do think we have to be careful with, with language that would indicate that there's any kind of a preferential use, and so those word changes, I think, are worth making. So I think that the solution the neighborhood's worked out does give them less scheduled activity where they feel that they're overwhelmed by parking and organized sports, but it's not intended to be exclusively for residential use on those off, unscheduled time periods, so.
Okay, Mr. Frederick?
Thank you. Since this is our last shot at making changes, here on page 10, which is the summary of the public process, in the right-hand column, the second bullet says, "Approval by Planning and Zoning Commission through public hearing." Well, that clearly isn't the case, so that needs to be changed, I believe. It'd just be through a non-public...
Ms. Yoshimura?
In regards to the matter relating to case 2011-010, I would like to move that we have a public hearing.
We've got a...
Get rid of the first motion?
Well, number one, we'd have to postpone it and set it up for a public hearing.
Right, that's right.
Okay, so, and this would have to be a replacement for Ms. Pease's motion for approval?
Yes.
So when we have a second motion on the floor for postponement, that takes precedence over the motion for approval. Okay, so do we have a second for postponement? Ms. Pease seconded it? Okay.
I think she has a question.
Ms. Pease?
I just, my question is, I think we have procedures for parks of certain size or certain levels of intensity, we're supposed to automatically have a public hearing, so I just wondered whether this park falls into that category? If so, then definitely we should be having a public hearing. If, if we, if this is sort of optional because it's a smaller or less intensively used park, we can still, judging on the intensity, we can say we want to have a public hearing, I think, but I wondered whether Ms. Yoshimura had a specific reason? Is it just that we don't know, and it says public hearing, so we better do it?
I think we should follow procedure. If this is what is, is the procedure, approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission through a public hearing, then I think that's what we should have. I guess, I have a generic question, which I guess I could raise at staff at this particular point in time, since we're in this part of the agenda, which is, what, how does something that comes to your department determine whether or not it is a public hearing or whether it's on the consent agenda? Because I personally am very confused by that.
Yes, Ms. Yoshimura, let's see if I can explain that. Items that are public facilities, such as schools, roads, parks, are typically placed on the consent agenda. The only time we would remove them from the consent agenda and put them on the public hearing agenda is if we knew that there was, or there were a lot of people who wanted to speak on the issue, if we knew it was controversial, then we would then elect to do that, to give people an opportunity to speak on that case. If there are smaller cases, as most of them are, and there isn't usually any public, you know, objection to them, then they're automatically put on the consent agenda. And there is no, in terms of parks, any sort of guidelines in terms of, if it's a very large park, then it's a public hearing; if it's a smaller park, it's a consent agenda. We really just base it on what we feel. Has it been through a public process? Is there any controversy? Have we had calls to us, or letters come in, or emails? And then if we have that happening, then we know that, you know, it's an exciting project for members of the public, and then we bump it up to a public hearing. But outside that, they're typically placed on the consent agenda.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair, I distinctly remember, we had a chart of parks printed out for us, and there was some measure that we approved, whether provisionally for the Assembly to approve or not, that had thresholds for when we would have a public hearing and when we wouldn't. And again, I think it may have been part of Title 21, but I think there is some guidance that we've approved.
I think what you may be referring to, Ms. Pease, is that there is a list of parks, and it's guidance, guidance to us in terms of who we need to send out for review, is it, which community councils? Does it just go to the Federation for review, and then they're responsible for getting it to the appropriate community council? But there is guidance, but it's in terms of who reviews it, in terms of community councils, that we are obligated to send it out to for their review and their comment.
Mr. Cruz?
I don't, I don't know if this makes any difference, but I can tell you this area, having done municipal upgrades to utilities and roads directly adjacent to this property, that it was a big deal with any change, and the public was very well wanted to be informed and involved with that development, redevelopment. And so they're very active. I don't know what the impact of the changes we're talking about here are, but just from my personal experience, I think a public, a public hearing would be appropriate. my personal experience, I think a public hearing would be appropriate for this particular area.
Okay, Ms. Frederick?
Thank you. Through the chair, I'd ask Ms. Ferguson to elaborate a little bit more on the public process and her perception. Has it been thorough? And I know that there was a public process through the Parks and Recreation Commission, and do you feel that the public had ample opportunity to participate in, voice their opinion? And has there been any lingering controversy that you're aware of? Are people knocking on your door about this at this point?
Mr. Frederick, there has not been. The only comments were the ones that came in late this afternoon that Ms. Pease passed along to you. And I want to point out that if we do move it up to a public hearing, what that would require, what that would require, what it amounts to, is that we would send public hearing notices to all the residents that live within 500 or 600 feet of the park. Obviously, they already know about this. There've been public hearings, you know, there've been public meetings in their neighborhood. They're aware that there is a plan afoot for Linary Park. I don't know that we're going to get any more comments than we would have, or, you know, that this would take any more further steps in public awareness than what's already done.
Thank you.
Is that what you wished? I got you on my thing, you're done? Okay, Ms. Pease?
Well, maybe if I could read a little bit of this letter written to me by one of the leaders in the community, I don't know if it'll make a difference, but it's probably worth reading. I'll excerpt a little bit. "During the planning process, Suzanne did a masterful job of balancing the issues and concerns of a very intense community regarding the use of Linary Park. About 15 years ago, Linary Park was so overused that neighbors could rarely use it during summer evenings due to continual scheduled soccer games, three consecutively per night." And then I'll skip down. "The balance that has been struck with the Little League use at Linary is a fine balance. Suzanne has done a wonderful job of addressing all the concerns raised by Turnigan residents to the community's satisfaction. Doing so was not easy. Each of the issues you raise has a detailed story behind it about why the plan is written the way it is. Given the immense amount of community engagement to produce the master plan before you, I urge you to support the plan as drafted by the community and approved by the Turnigan Community Council." So, I'll, this was Blythe Marston, who lives right across the street and is very involved in the community. So, I guess what I'm saying in kind of response to Mr., I think it was Mr. Frederick, I think probably the community has been really engaged, and I'm not sure if we would get a lot more people at a public hearing. So, I just, I just offer that, it's what I received.
Ms. Yoshimura?
I really appreciate those comments, and I can see where, by just looking at this, that it has been very well thought out, and it is, I believe it does have the support of the community. However, what I want to say is, all of that does not absolve this commission's responsibility to hold a public hearing, if that is what we are required to do.
Any further discussion? Yeah, Ms. Prouse?
Is this document that was given to us considered now public?
Ms. Ferguson?
I'm sorry, didn't hear the question.
Is this considered a public document?
Yes, it's a public document.
And if the public document says it'll be approved through a public hearing?
I think that was just a mistake. I should have said a public meeting. We often say public meeting rather than public hearing. But perhaps Suzanne Little could speak further to that.
So, I agree, I don't disagree with you, but since it says public hearing, if we don't do a public hearing, is there any legal ramifications? And it's a public document?
That's something we'll have to consider in our vote.
I think it's just a mistake in there, and it's, I think the commission is under no obligation to hold a public hearing. It's only if, for whatever reason, you should decide to want to, but there's no requirement to.
Any further discussion? Okay, the motion on the floor is to initially postpone, and then we'll have to have a second motion to do a public hearing. So, we're basically dealing just with the postponement right now. So, the question for the commission is, do we postpone? And, let's see, we have to take a voice vote because the machine doesn't, oh, it shows, okay, all right, all right. It's just the other thing. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and vote, yes, we postpone, no, we don't postpone. On your screen. On your screen. Okay, that fails. We do not postpone. Okay, we're back to the original motion. Ms. Pease? You're, we, that was defeated, so we're back to your motion, which is for approval.
All right, well, I've spoken once already, so it stands, I guess, my motion stands.
Okay, any further discussion on Ms. Pease's motion to approve with the recommended changes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Frederick.
Make sure that my suggestion to add the change on that bullet on page 10 to reflect public meeting rather than public hearing is included in that motion?
Yes.
Ms. Pease, will you just take that as a friendly motion, or a friendly amendment?
Yes, yes, I do.
So, how, the wording then is through a public what?
Meeting.
Or is it a non-public hearing?
I believe it should be non-public hearing.
That's more precise.
Non-public hearing.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, is there objection? No objection, that's approved. So, Ms. Ferguson, that means you're going to have to incorporate those changes?
Yes.
Okay, let's see, paragraph E, unfinished business, E1 was withdrawn by the municipality. So, we now move on to our public hearings. G1, this will be Alaska Baptist Family Services, case 2010-135. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I spoke too soon, just a minute. We need to deal with F5A, which is the Anchorage School District proposed 2011-2021 10-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Now, our, wait a minute, let me find my notes. Okay, and just to remind the commission, that our function in regards to the School District 10-Year Capital Improvement Plan is to, but the charter mandates that this capital improvement plan be approved by the school board submitted to the Assembly at least 90 days before the end of the school district's fiscal year. The commission's role is defined in AMC 211015A6, which requires that the commission review and make recommendations to the Assembly and school board regarding the annual capital improvement program of the municipality and the school district. Generally, the commission is charged with making recommendations that implement the municipal function of planning for the economic, social, and land use needs of the community. So, we had a work session, basically, from 5:30 to 6:30 this evening. So, does the staff wish to make any further presentation on this particular case right now?
Planning staff has no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. So, we need to have a motion, a positive motion for approval? Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Yoshimura, seconded by Ms. Dean. Ms. Yoshimura, would you like to speak to your motion for approval?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for, to Mr. Abbott and the demographer for an informative work session in regards to this matter. Although I don't necessarily agree with everything that's in the capital improvement project plan, I am going to support my motion. I feel it is a well-thought-out plan, meets the demographic and financial needs of the municipality. I want to encourage the school district to look carefully at the vocational and technical needs of this community, as was exemplified most recently by an AEDC survey stating that, from employers, that one of the most difficult challenges they have is to find adequately-trained staff and employees. I also would like to go on the record as saying that I would, in the future, also like to see if there are changes over $1 million to the CIP plan that we have, that we are approving, that they come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to going on the Anchorage ballot for funding through school board bonds.
Any further comments from the board? Or from the commission, I'm sorry? Yes, sir?
I would echo the comment about vocational, technical, I guess it's called career technical education now. The emphasis there is critical to our nation, and we've got to start right here at home.
Any further comments? Any objection? No objection, that's approved unanimously. Okay, now we move on to our public hearings. The first case is G1, case 2010-135, Alaska Baptist Family Services amending a conditional use for youth habilitative care facility. Let's go ahead and hear from, hear from staff.
A moment, please, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Ferguson seems to have stepped out of the room.
Sorry for that. Where are you, did you all wanted to hear a discussion of the case, or did you just have questions?
We want to have staff presentation.
This is a major amendment to a conditional use for the Alaska Baptist Family Services Residential Group Home. ABFS has had a long history of successfully providing services to youth for over 50 years in the Anchorage community. ABFS currently maintains 12 beds for SED, Severely Emotionally Disturbed, adolescents and boys who need residential care with 24-hour behavior rehabilitation services. Their current client population ranges in age from 14 to 18-year-old males. This conditional use is being pursued to expand professional rehabilitation support by ABFS via constructing an eight-bed group home for male youths ages 9 to 13 that are severely emotionally disturbed. The new 4,187-square-foot residential habilitative care facility will be located adjacent to the existing residential administrative and service buildings on site. The building will house living quarters for eight boys, an off-duty staff person, and an attached department for program staff. In addition, the new facility will contain a small office for on-duty supervisors and an attached and secure two-car garage for vehicles used for student transport. Other amenities, such as a paved patio area, activity areas, and upgrades to the parking lot are included as a part of this project. Parking lot improvements include the relocation of three head bolt heaters from the south side of the existing parking lot to the new parking lot. There is a cover memo attached to this because this project had been postponed, and it concerned a request by the petitioner to increase the number of beds from 12 to 16 in their existing building. I also wanted to point out that if you look on the cover memo, at the bottom of it, it says the existing facility will require a Municipal Department of Health and Human Services permit for quasi-institutional facility. Tony Barrett at DHHS has now said that he doesn't believe that they, they may or may not come under a definition of quasi-institutional. They, there was a meeting today between Mr. Barrett and the executive director of ABFS, and they are working together with this, on this particular issue. Mr. Barrett has requested that condition number five be deleted.
Ms. Ferguson, in regards to that item five, then, so basically, our Department of Health and Human Services, the municipality, has basically recommended its deletion, number five?
Yes, that's correct. And Mr. Barrett is here if you have questions for him.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Dean, do you have a question for staff before we get into public hearing?
Through the chair. My question of staff is on page six, item number four. It says, "Alaska Baptist Family Services have approved for 24-bed spaces." Is it, are you meaning approved by this document, as approved for 24 beds?
Right, if the commission agrees to changing their conditional allowance in the existing building, they're allowed 12, 12 beds. They wish to increase that to 16.
So, it's 16 plus 8?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, you've got two things that are there, you've got boys 14 to 18, you want 16 beds, and then eight beds for age 9 through 13?
Yes, in the new facility, in the new building.
That's where the 24 comes from, okay?
Right.
Because I was reading up here where it said 16, so I was looking for 16 in the back, okay. All right. Okay, is it, that completes the staff presentation?
Yes, it does.
Okay, well, we'd like to have the petitioner come forward and give their presentation, and let me read the rules here before we get going on that. The procedures by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is, after the staff presentation is completed in public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure, and these times are, petitioner, including their representatives, 10 minutes, and part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, such as community councils and PTAs, have five minutes. Individuals have three minutes. And when your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the Commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the Commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. And finally, any individual may request written findings from any Commission decision within seven days. So, when you come up, please state your name for the record, and let us know if you want to have some rebuttal time, and then we'll push the button, and you can watch the time fly by.
Thank you. My name is Mark Kimmer. I'm a landscape architect with Bettisworth North, representing ABFS here tonight for this conditional use amendment. With me, I have Lori Morris, CEO of Alaska Baptist Family Services, and Roy Roundtree, Principal Architect at Bettisworth North. I would like to reserve five minutes for rebuttals.
Okay, very good, so you have five minutes to talk. Go ahead, sir.
This is a bit of a regurgitation of the Staff report. ABFS has been serving children in Anchorage since 1946. In 1972, they focused their mission on providing rehabilitation services to SED children, boys. In 1974, a conditional use was approved for the facilities that currently reside on the site, which include a home for 14- to 18-year-old SED boys, an administration building, and a garage. In 1997, an amendment was made to that original conditional use for pantry addition, lavatory addition, and storage craft addition. This conditional use amendment before you asks for two things: to expand the services of ABFS by constructing a new group home for eight male youths ages 9 to 13 that are severely emotionally disturbed. The new 4,187-square-foot residential habilitative care facility will be located near the existing administration building and service buildings on-site. The second point is, the current conditional use lists a maximum capacity of the existing facility of 12 beds. It is requested that the maximum capacity of that existing facility be revised to 16. The existing facility has always had the capacity for 16 children, and it is licensed by the State of Alaska for that number. We have a copy of that license here, and I believe you have one in your package. The project adheres to current Title 21 standards for lighting, parking, and landscaping. It adheres to the Hillside District Plan's low-density requirements of three to five dwelling units per acre. The project uses city sewer and water, so there will be no sanitation issues or well-water issues in the future. The driveway will be improved to more ably accommodate fire vehicles. It's currently 12 feet wide, paved, and the shoulders are going to be expanded four feet on each side to meet the minimum requirements of the fire department. ABFS has no issues with Staff recommendations 1 through 4, as listed on the Staff report. As you heard, number five is asked to be deleted by DHHS. ABFS met with DHHS today because of the age population of the new facility, ages 9 to 13. It is ABFS's understanding that it will no longer need to meet the condition, meet condition number five as a part of this conditional use amendment. We ask that it be deleted from those conditions. That's all I have. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there any questions for Mr. Kimmer? Okay, apparently, there's no questions. You have seven minutes, 10 seconds for rebuttal. You didn't use your full five minutes. Okay, I'm now opening the public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to testify? For a second time, is there anybody that wishes to testify? I guess there's nobody that wishes to testify. Mr. Kimmer, rebuttal time.
Thanks for your consideration.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. I'm at a rest with the Board to take a positive motion for approval. Ms. Pease, and seconded by Ms. Dean. Ms. Pease?
Yes, in the matter of case 2010-135, capacity revision of Alaska Family Baptist Services. I move for approval with the conditions recommended by Staff on page six of our packet, with, however, the deletion of condition number five.
Okay, Ms. Pease, and wish to add anything to that? Need some findings?
Yes, before I do findings, I put down deletion of condition number five, and now I can't remember if I put that down from my reading, or did Ms. Ferguson mention that?
Ms. Ferguson, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Staff recommendation.
I think it was in the packet, and I just thought, wait a second, was, okay. Yes, as far as findings go, this is a long-established use at this site. It's quite a large lot, which provides a natural separation from any neighboring activities. And the increase in size of the number of residents can well be absorbed by the site. There's some improvements, such as the fire department access, which will be beneficial. And in general, this meets the conditional use requirements, and is an important service to the community, so I'll be supporting it.
Ms. Yoshimura?
I too will be supporting this motion. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Alaska Baptist Family Services for an attractive but appropriate design that blends in with the character of the Lower Hillside, and doesn't try to make a statement, but provides safe and warm housing. And I thank them for the shelter and the services that they are providing for those that are most in need in this community.
Any further comments from the Commissioners? Is there any objection? That is approved unanimously. Okay, let's see, case G2 has been postponed till 3/7/11. We'll now move on to case 3, 2011-011, Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority rezoning of to R1 and PLISL, 54.4 acres. Could we have a Staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Page 11 of your packet shows a nice map of the subject of this rezone application. It's overlaid, the boundaries of this rezone are overlaid on a topo map, which is helpful to see what the terrain looks like. Couple page, a few pages further, and page 15, there's a nice aerial photo of the site. So, you can see where Eagle River Loop Road is, and where Yosemite Drive is, and the surrounding areas. On page 25 and 27, I'd like to point out the South Fork Community Council's comments, and the, so that's on page 25 of the packet. And then on page 27, there's a letter from the Eagle Point Homeowners Association. And so, those are the only public comments that we received, and they have some things to say about the property. The property currently is zoned at PC District with special limitations per Assembly Ordinance 84-143. You can read that Assembly Ordinance on page 64 of the packet, towards the back of the packet. And it just says that the special limitations on this PC District are that uses shall be restricted to residential or public institutional. The petitioner is requesting to rezone from PCSL to R1SL and PLI. The special limitations on the R1 portion are that the total number of lots are capped at 97 total single-family residential lots. The special limitations offered by the petitioner on the PLI District are to, first of all, limit the permitted uses to parks, open space, and playfields, and, secondly, to permit accessory uses type 1, 2, and 3 towers, and then limit the conditional uses to towers, commercial recreational uses, off-street parking, utility and transportation facilities, and snow-disposal sites. The Planning Division finds that the standards for a rezone conformance to the Comprehensive Plan have been met. The Comprehensive Plan, that's the Chugiak Eagle River update from 2006, identifies the northern part of the petition site as residential, for residential uses, three to six dwelling units per acre. Incidentally, the three to six dwelling units per acre, this R1 proposal with a special limitations limiting the number of residential lots to 97 residential lots, that's a dwelling units per acre of 3.6, so it's at the very low end of that, that three to six dwelling units per acre. They're offering 97 lots, which is the 3.6 dwelling units per acre. On the area identified as special study area, this is an area that's the former site of the Eagle River landfill. There's also some steep topography on the site. This has been identified in the Eagle River Plan as unsuitable for development. The petitioner is calling for this to be zoned PLISL and not for residential dwelling. If you look further down, the proposed rezone to R1SL and PLISL is compatible with the surrounding land uses and the land use plan in the December 2006 Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan update. That Plan's land use plan map is included in your packet on the very last page, page 71. You can, there's a little arrow to the petition site, and arrows to the two, the two land use classifications that are identified in this plan. One is special study area, and the other one is this residential, three to six UA. Land use patterns: the property is surrounded by the Eagle River High School to the north, an R1ASL property to the east, that's owned by the Department of Transportation, State, the State of Alaska, and then Eagle River Loop Road to the south, and then a DOT maintenance yard in Yosemite Drive to the west. Transportation: the rezone to R1SL and PLISL will not create a significant new traffic burden on existing vehicular transportation infrastructure. The Traffic Engineering Department will require a scoping meeting and possible traffic impact analysis prior to subdividing. The petitioner is already aware of this. They've met with the Traffic Engineering Division already, and know that upon, prior to submitting application to subdivide, they'll have to work out a traffic impact analysis with the DOT and with the traffic engineer. The Official Streets and Highways Plan identifies Yosemite Drive as a collector and Eagle River Loop Road as an arterial. Private Development notes that project management and engineering is currently managing a drainage study of the area. PMNE has also issued a request for proposals for a concept study of what would be required to bring Yosemite Drive up to full collector standards, though full construction of the project is not yet funded. A court decision requires Yosemite Drive to be upgraded to collector standards. This will be required prior to recording any plat of the property, of this subject parcel. The time when the development probably will occur, the petitioner has applied for a conditional use permit for a fill-site operation on the proposed PLISL property. The Planning Division is holding that application until Assembly has had, until the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Assembly has had an opportunity to act on this rezone application. The TLO's future plans are to fill the part of the PLISL, a portion of the PLISL property, flatten it off, and to develop playfields or open space. The effect of the amendment on the distribution of land uses, the effect of the rezoning would be to define the subject parcel for single-family residential on the north side and playfields or parks on the south side. The proposed rezone meets the intent of the Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan update. The land use plan identifies the petition site as residential, three to six dwelling units per acre, and special study area. The vacant land suitability map in the Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan update shows this, the northern part is suitable, and the southern part, that's shown as PLISL by the petitioner, is being unsuitable. It's presumably due to the former landfill site. On the proposed R1SL property, the petitioner has offered to construct no more than 94 dwelling units, which is the same number of dwelling units that would be allowed under the R1A District. Rezoning the property to straight R1 would comply with our land use plan, which is three to six dwelling units per acre. The South Fork Community Council has passed a resolution and prepared a letter for us to see here, supporting rezoning to R1A, because they want to limit the number of dwellings that could possibly be built on this site. The petitioner originally applied for R1, straight R1, but after hearing, attending a South Fork Community Council meeting, and with attention to the desires of the community, has revised their application, so they're just now asking for R1SL with that cap on the number of lots. In the neighboring development to the north, Eagle, that's north of the school site, the Eagle Point subdivision was rezoned from R1ASL to R1SL, with the number of dwelling units capped at the R1A level. You can see the Assembly Ordinance that approved that. It's Assembly Ordinance 93-159, it's at the back of the packet. This allowed Eagle Point subdivision to be able to navigate topographical constraints and environmentally sensitive areas with R1-sized lots instead of R1A. The Planning Division has no objection to the proposed rezone to R1SL because it complies with the Eagle River Comp Plan. On the proposed PLISL property, the petitioner has offered special limitations restricting the permitted uses, accessory uses, and conditional uses. Planning, again, has no objection to the proposed rezone because the property is a former landfill and dump site. The South Fork Community Council has asked for there to be 100-foot-wide natural vegetative buffer on the north side, along the north boundary of the property, abutting the Eagle River High School. This is part of the area that's proposed by the petitioner's R1 with special limitations. The Community Council cites the Heritage Land Banks Parcel 1-085 land use study. That was a study that was adopted by Assembly Ordinance 96-86, which recommended 100-foot buffer, natural vegetative, undisturbed buffer, on the north side of Yosemite Drive and on the west side of Eagle River High School. That's on page 70, you can read that. There actually is a drawing showing what I just described. The Community Council's request conflicts with the land use study, which considered the issue and the need for natural vegetative buffer, and decided not to recommend it. Planning Division supports the final recommendation of the land use study, which did not issue any recommendation for a buffer on the TLO's property. The need for buffer landscaping will be addressed when the property is subdivided, presumably sometime in the future. That's the appropriate vehicle to determine if any necessary buffers or transition areas are needed, based on actual development plans. Therefore, the Planning Division recommends approval of the rezone of the proposed R1 property with special limitations. On page eight, no more than, what's, the special limitation says, "No more than 97 dwelling units." units may be constructed." The department recommends approval also for the rezoning to PLI SL as shown in the map on page 10. And the special limitations are listed on pages eight and nine. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Thank you for, through the chair, thank you for your presentation. Do you know what the average daily trip counts are on Yosemite Drive at this time?
I know, Ms. Yoshimura, I don't have that information, I don't think anywhere in the packet or available to me. I could look to see what traffic and DOT have said as far as their comments, but...
Perhaps a petitioner can ask, answer that too. Any further questions for staff? Mr. Pruse?
Thank you. On your recommendations C1 and 2 on page 9, natural resource extraction extracts not less than five acres, this is the R1 that you're recommending?
Uh, go ahead.
Okay. Could you talk to that a little bit about quantities or times of operation or what exactly that means?
Yes, through the chair, Mr. Pruse. So, it's a little bit confusing on page eight and nine because it all sort of is together. But if you look at the first sentence on page eight, under department recommendations, it says, "The department recommends approval of rezoning to R1 subject to the following special limitation," just one, and it says, "1A, no more than 97 dwelling units per acre." End of story. Now, the next recommendation that the planning makes is for approval of the PLI rezone, and then it lists the special limitations on that. So, the, what you referred to, that C1, the natural resource extraction, that is only having to do with the PLI property. And what this is, just so it's very clear, the, you know, the planning division was perfectly comfortable with a straight rezone to PLI. But because of the community's concerns about, well, what could happen on this property, what is allowed in the PLI district, it allows senior housing, it allows all sorts of things, allows hotels. And so, the petitioner is, to quell some of the concerns of the community, provided all these special limitations. And it basically limits it down to just these, this permitted principal uses and structures are as follows, parks, parkways, green belts, open space, blah, 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 public recreational facilities, playgrounds, blah, blah, blah. Accessory uses, it's basically just type 1, 2, and 3 antennas, towers. And then, under C, it, so of all of the things that are listed in the PLI district, they cut out everything except for these ones, right? And so you can have a fill site operation. They've already applied to that, for that. But we've, we've said, we're going to hold that application until, and we won't begin processing it until after this rezone question is settled by the Assembly. Then, we, you will see a conditional use permit application, should it be rezone, I'm sorry. Then you would be reviewing their, their fill, their operation to have a fill site on the PLI SL portion of the property. The other things that are listed down here are towers, off-street parking, snow disposal site.
I'm still confused. So they have to come back for a conditional use to, for natural resource extraction?
That's right.
But it is permitted, under conditional, under conditional use at a subsequent time from then?
Okay, so there's no plan to extract any dirt from this area. There is a plan to fill it, fill it, flatten it so that it could be used for parkland or whatever.
I understand that they have, that if they want to do these five items, they have to come back to get a conditional use permit.
Yeah, so, yes, that's correct, Mr. Pruse. So presently, in the PLI district, you're allowed to do all of these things. But what they've done is they've cut out, you know, the, all the other stuff and just left it. Only these things are allowed. All the other things, if you and your, flip through all the allowed, I'm sorry, all the permitted uses, all the permitted accessory uses, and all the conditional uses, they've cut out 90% of them and just left these are the only ones left over that they're allowed to do.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, I have two questions. I just want to make sure I understand correctly with the issue of the buffer. One of the letters from the Homeowners Association asserted that it was adopted as part of the Eagle River Comprehensive Plan through Ordinance 9686. But then elsewhere in the packet, in the Lowndesbury and Associates letter, it says that that was only pertaining to land owned by the municipality. Is that correct, not the mental health trust land?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, yeah, there is no requirement for any sort of natural vegetative buffer on the, on the, on the, on the property that's the subject of this rezone. There's no requirement whatsoever for a natural vegetative buffer. The community council would like for there to be that requirement. There's nothing in any sort of plan requiring that. And what, what, what Lowndesbury and Associates has done and what I've done in this report is just point out what, where the 100-foot natural vegetative buffer was recommended, and it wasn't on this property.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then, another question, and there may be testimony to this effect, but with regard to the possibility of a snow dump, my immediate thought was, on top of a landfill, seemed to be that you wouldn't want extra runoff through a landfill. And I don't know anything about that, but is that anything that your runoff department or, not runoff department, the Water Management Services, or anyone commented on?
Well, planet, yes, thank you for the question. Prior to, prior to having a snow disposal site, and I don't think that the TLO has any plans for this, but prior to having a snow disposal site, they would have to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission with, you know, a plan and a request for a conditional use permit. And at that time, the commission, this body, would, would review and see if it was appropriate and met all the standards for a conditional use permit, if there would ever be one. And so, so planning was, was content with just having a straight rezone to PLI with all the PLI uses that are allowed. But the, but Lowndesbury and Associates, the TLO's gone through and cut out all the ones except for these ones. And should there ever be a snow disposal site, the commission would review and decide whether or not to approve such a thing.
Thank you.
Ms. Yoshimura?
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, well, petitioner, it's their turn now. You have 10 minutes, and all the other same rules apply as I mentioned previously. Please state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is, excuse me, Jim Sawhill. I'm with Lowndesbury and Associates. And with me tonight is Tim Spurnak from the Mental Health Trust Authority Trust Land Office. We're here representing the Mental Health Trust Authority in this rezone application tonight. Again, as staff pointed out, as we're currently zoned PCSL planned community, special limitations, and our special limitations are residential or institutional uses. What kind of triggered this rezone that we have here for us tonight is really our plan to provide, to use a portion of the site as a fill site for the complementary project that you approved about six weeks ago for the removal of the material at 40th and Laurel Street. But we found when we made our application for our conditional use on this site, that we needed to get a master plan approved first or rezone the property to a specific use before we could process that. So that's what kind of rushed this land use decision at this time. We have done some additional work and some additional studies and came in with our proposed rezone application to R1 and PLI SL. In our journey to get here tonight, we've had several meetings with the community council. We've met with the community council three times, and we made a presentation to the Eagle Point Homeowners Association's annual meeting, which was well-attended last month. Through those interactions with the community, we learned several things and several concerns from the community, which caused us to modify our plans and provide additional special limitations to try to address those concerns. What we heard from the community is they were concerned about traffic on Yosemite Drive, they were concerned about the density on the property, and they were concerned about buffers and buffering between the school and Yosemite Drive. So through those, through those discussions, and we talked with staff, they were essentially at the beginning of this project, really pushing for straight zoning without any special limitations. They prefer to let the zoning code work for itself and have as few special limitations on properties as they can. But we felt it was important to provide those special limitations to alleviate some of the concerns of the neighborhood. First, speaking to the PLI zoning, when you read the PLI zoning, it's pretty intimidating, some of the stuff that can be allowed there, and especially when we work for the Mental Health Land Trust and some of the institutional uses that could be approved there. Secondly, on the PLI portion of the property, it's mostly undevelopable land. We have a portion of it that was an old refuge landfill, but primarily the greater part of it, and you can see the area on the aerial photo that's cleared, there was about 200,000 yards of material placed on the site from a pork project back in the 90s, and that area is really just unsuitable for development. We can't build a structure on that and have it not sink and not have it be a problem. In addition, we don't want to build anything on the old landfill portion. So that area really isn't suitable for development. What we want to use it for is open space and leave it in its natural. The portion that's currently natural, we're going to leave it predominantly natural, the part that's along Eagle River Loop, and then we want to come in with our fill project, which you will approve at a future date for constructing some, some play fields in that location. The area that we are proposing for R1, R1 is, is really what the Comp Plan is pointing us to. When you look at the density that's recommended in the Eagle River Comp Plan, it's 3 to 6 dwelling units per acre, which leads us to the R1 or R1A zoning, or the appropriate zonings to get into those general land use densities. We felt that a straight R1 was fine, but after we heard the concerns of the neighborhood, we, we came back with the special limitation to reduce us to the same densities as the R1A zoning would allow. But we would like some of the dimensional flexibility that still lies in the R1 zone. This property is unique in its shape. The shape of the property that it will be zoned R1 is kind of triangular, and we also have some areas that have some slope. So we need the flexibility in the R1 zone and the dimensional lots so we can have some of the R1 lots, and then we can enlarge our lots in some of the slope-affected areas, but we can still keep our zoning within the R1A overall density. And this, this zoning strategy was used successfully in Eagle Point, which is just to the north and to the east of the high school. And so it puts us absolutely compatible with the dominant land development that's in the area right now for single-family. So we felt that was a good special limitation that should alleviate some of the concerns. As far as is traffic concerns down the line, we don't have any subdivision layouts at this point. We understand we will have to work with the traffic department and provide a traffic impact analysis for our subdivision. We don't believe the 100-foot buffer that the community is recommending is appropriate on this site. Again, if you look at the map on page 71, or 70, is the map from the Heritage Land Bank study, and that map boundary shows you the boundary of the Heritage Land Bank property that was being studied at that time. So that is the limit of that study, and that's the limit of the area where they can do those additional limitations. The 100-foot buffer along Yosemite Drive is a restriction that the HLB chose to put on their own property before they disposed of it. Same with the buffer that's along the east side of the high school. That's a buffer that they chose to put on their property before they transferred it to the school district for their use. And we are outside that boundary, so this study doesn't apply to us. What is in the Title 21 for transition buffering between R1 and an institutional use, which is the PLI, is a 15-foot buffer landscaping, is what's currently in the code between these two land uses. We feel like, we'd like to defer that issue onto our plat, and we have an actual design that we can look at and we really know what we're buffering, whether we're going to have longitudinal streets or cul-de-sacs backing up to the school, how we're going to put our trails, and what other techniques we can use for good transitioning and good design. So with that, I'm happy to say we have no objections to the staff comments and recommendations for approval, and would be happy to answer any questions.
You have 3 minutes 24 seconds for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Sawhill? Yes, Ms. Dean?
Actually, my question is of staff, clarification. If you could let everyone here know the difference between R1 and R1A, what the setbacks are, the lot widths and the lot sizes are, just for everybody to know what those dimensions are. It's nowhere in the packet that I could find, unless it's in there and I just didn't see it.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Yes, you're correct. R1A is not, neither of them, the lot, minimum lot sizes are shown. So, R1 district requires a 6,000-square-foot lot, that's the minimum lot area, and 50-foot width to the lot is the minimum width to a lot. So, R1, 6,000 square feet, 50-foot width. R1A requires a larger lot, 8,400 square feet and 70-feet width.
And the setbacks are both the same, aren't they?
That's correct. That's correct. About 20-foot front yard, 5-foot side yards, and 10-foot rear yard.
Answer your question, Ms. Dean. Okay, fine. Ms. Yoshimura?
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Sawhill. Can you give me a wag in terms of the average daily trips on Yosemite Drive?
I unfortunately do not have that information. What I have heard from the community is Yosemite Drive is quite congested when the high school lets out in the afternoon, and they get quite a bit of stacking from the cars that are trying to get out onto Eagle River Loop Road. The Eagle River, Yosemite Drive and Eagle River Loop Road is a signalized intersection, and it is due to be improved by the school district through the court decision. And the municipality currently has a request for proposal on the street to retain a consultant to figure out what that design needs to be. And I have no idea when they're going to build it. It's our understanding that they're going to improve it in the next two, maybe three years.
And as I, as I read the packet, you've made a commitment not to build this subdivision until that road has been improved. Did I read that correctly or did I not?
You read that correctly, and that's a self-imposition. If we go forward with our development, we will have to improve Yosemite Drive peripheral to our site to the appropriate standard to handle any traffic impacts that we would cause. And so we would just as soon wait and wait for those improvements to get done before we start our project.
And could you address the issue of secondary egress for your subdivision?
What we will likely have is two accesses to Yosemite Drive, to provide two accesses in. The one that would be closest to the intersection is likely to be right in, right out only, and the one farthest away from Eagle River Loop Road is likely to be a full access. We are not allowed to have any access to Eagle River Loop Road. It's a controlled access facility. So when DOT acquired that right away for Eagle River Loop Road, they acquired the access rights. So we cannot have any access to Eagle River Loop Road.
And what would be the dimension between the two access points? How far apart will they be?
They will have to be at least 300 feet apart.
And is that self-imposed or is that a requirement by the municipality?
The 300-foot separation.
Mm-hmm. Is that a requirement?
I think the minimum separation of intersections by, by design criteria, man, there's 150 feet, but the desirable is 300 feet, which is a city block.
So your property can, the property that you're representing can encompass two points of egress?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Sawhill, thank you for your presentation. You mentioned that the port had used it as a fill site in the 90s parts of the area. Could you point on the overhead photo where those areas are?
Sure. The fill site was in this area here. You see, it's got second-growth trees now, so they're small trees, so that's the limits of the fill area.
How about on the west side of Yosemite?
This area over here?
Yes.
That area is not subject of this rezone request tonight. That is land that is owned by the Mental Health Trust. It's on the other side. That material was placed from excess material from the Walmart project by a different contractor in a different timeframe.
It just fell within the petitioner area. That's what confused me there.
Okay.
The question then, do you have a conceptual idea of how the plat would be, would come together? In other words, would it be a loop around that fill area that you just outlined?
No, we won't construct any roads around that fill area. There's currently a trail around that fill area now that's used by, under a temporary permit, by the high school and the Nordic Ski Club for the area. They actually have a ski loop that goes through there. Once we do our additional fill project, we will maintain that trail system for the community temporarily until we come in, but our road system will stay within the R1-zoned area that's on...
To the north of that?
Yeah, to the north of that. And so if you look on page 11 of your packet, that has the map of the rezone area, the road system will be completely contained within the R1-zoned property.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Yoshimura.
Through the chair, Mr. Sawhill, and this is also directed to staff. I have a certain amount of frustration with a rezone this large that does have a significant impact to the surrounding subdivision without having more of a plan for the subdivision itself. And I understand that we're only talking about a rezone here, but as I understand it, and staff, you can correct me, we could also, you could have also addressed it as a planned community, or it is, it was, it was a PC zone. So I'm wondering, why did you sort of just go for a rezone and not a PC? Why didn't you address the issue as sort of a planned community? So with a rezone of 54 acres, we would have some idea of what it is we're sort of attempting to accomplish here. Can you address that in a roundabout way?
Sure, absolutely. We considered doing this project as a planned community, a PC. With a PC or a planned community, we would have developed a bubble diagram that showed the development areas, and then developed land uses for each of those development areas. Well, what we essentially have here is two development areas. We have a development area that's R1, single-family, and we have open space. So to that extent, we've developed the same bubble diagram that we would have developed for a PC, and we talked a lot about developing a PC for this or not. I personally am not a big fan of PCs unless you're trying to do something a little different or unique. I prefer to use straight zoning whenever we can, and in this case, and at this location, I think the best thing to do is just a straight single-family. We could have written a PC, come in with smaller lots, some other development techniques, but we didn't feel they would be well-accepted by the community at this location, and we thought the straight zoning was better. You know, what we're trying to do here is shoot for medium-priced homes, so we're trying to shoot for something in the $350,000 to $500,000 range, and we can accomplish that with the R1 zoning. We're not looking to do small lots. We're not looking to do large homes that will compete directly with Eagle Point subdivision. That's a very nice subdivision with a lot of amenities, and we wanted to be just one step down from that, provide nice housing, and something that would fit in this area without writing a PC, so...
Wouldn't a PC also be able to address some of the issues that the Eagle Point residents have raised? It could have addressed issues like lot width, lot size. It could have addressed issues, design criteria, landscaping. It could have addressed any number of additional issues that I think would have perhaps made the surrounding residents a little more comfortable, and certainly myself as a commissioner knowing exactly what we are rezoning to accomplish here.
I think we could have put, we can still now put additional limitations on this property through straight zoning to deal with neighborhood concerns, and I think there's issues that are appropriate at the rezone level, the basic land use level, and then there's issues that are appropriate at the detailed design level or plating level. And what we're suggesting is the issues that the community is concerned about, we can deal with appropriately at the plating level, and that's what we should be doing here. The land, because it does have slopes in certain areas, we will be concentrating some of the smaller lots in the flatter areas and having larger lots in the more sloped areas. So we foresee a mixture of density within this development to fit what we have. We don't believe that at this time it's appropriate to put additional buffers on the property. That's really the last issue we have with the community. And the one thing is, we still have a lot of dialogue to do with the community. We've met with them three times to get the land use kind of figured out, and we're going to meet with them again once we come to our subdivision design. So our dialogue and interaction with the community doesn't stop here.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, sir. You have 3 minutes 24 seconds for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody that wishes to testify on case 2011-011?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please state your name for the record, and you are representing?
My name is Joe Visant. I am the manager of the company who is developing Eagle Point subdivision.
Okay, so you're representing, okay, you've got five minutes.
Oh, thank you. As representative of Eagle Point subdivision, I support the rezoning, the residential area, the mental health lands is proposed to rezon to R1A. I also have no objections to the proposed PLI area. I feel, however, that looking at the drawings they have shown us about what they proposed in the PLI ultimately to have some soccer fields, there is not enough distance between the fields themselves and the property lines. I think that area, the property line, proposed property line should be extended a little into the proposed residential area. This area is considered by the municipality, or at least was considered by the municipality, as a transition area. When you have low-density areas like R6 or R10, and higher-intensity areas, the municipality creates or encourages a transitional area. This was one of them. When the area that Eagle Point is located was rezoned, it was a municipally-initiated rezoning. The Eagle Point area was then owned by Ekutna Inc., and I was representing the Ekutna Inc. at the time. The municipality felt that being a transition area surrounded by parkland, it was desirable not provide a high, very high-intensity development, and the municipality felt that R1A was the ideal zoning for this land. I agreed, concurred with the municipality, and as well as Ekutna did. The area where Ekutna, where Eagle Point is located, however, has very steep slopes within the subdivision itself that was, felt that should not be developed. Many lots in Eagle Point subdivisions, as a matter of fact, long blocks, they are about between 14,000 and 16,000 square feet. The development intensity of Eagle Point is 3.0 units per acre. We feel that this area is part of that community where certain standards have been established through the development of Eagle River and the high school and so on, and that those standards should be maintained. The area owned by Ekutna, the property owned by Ekutna immediately south of Eagle Point is about 65 acres, is also zoned R1A. Regarding the 100-foot buffer, I would like to emphasize that, yes, the municipal study did not include any buffer within the municipal property. That study included strictly the municipal lands, and the mental health lands was not part of that study. But the city and the study reflects that the area has, that area has a section line with 100-foot vegetative easement, and probably that vegetative easement should be considered the buffer between the high school and any developing the mental health lands, but has to be in agreement between the high school and the developer. The high school tried to vacate that section line and was not successful. Ekutna Inc. objected to the vacation because it is their present access to their property. Regarding eventual second access to this land, in the 1980s, I worked with Ekutna and the DOT to create a new intersection on Eagle River Loop Road immediately south of the Gigs Bridge. That major intersection will provide access to both east land, east part of the bridge where Ekutna owns significant amounts of land, and to the west where these properties are located. I visualize eventually a road crossing the, going along the Ekutna land and reaching the Mental Health Lands Trust. Any plat for this area, Mental Health should reflect that. To the question Ms. Yoshimura had, what is the present traffic volume on Yosemite Drive?
Please summarize, sir.
Just answer that. The present traffic volume when the school is open is about 3,200 vehicles per day.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Visant. Is there any questions? Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to testify? Please state your name for the record.
Hello, yes, my name is Carl Von Lurde.
And you're representing?
I am on the boards of both the Southport Community Council and the Eagle Point Homeowners Association.
Okay, fine, you've got five minutes.
Good evening. I have been asked by many of my members on both of these groups, they have approached me with concerns. I'm going to detail specifically with those that deal with the proposed PLI area and specifically the landfill. As Commissioner Peace brought up earlier, a lot of it focuses on any type of disturbance regarding what has previously been used as a landfill, and/or anything close to that previous landfill area. As contained in the packet on page 2, the last paragraph, the landfill was operated from the '60s to the '77, again, the '60s with no specific start date, the exact boundaries not fully defined. And again, I've got lots of different rumors, lots of homesteaders that have approached me with what they've heard has been put there or whatnot, and that's, the disturbance of this is the primary issue. So the bottom line, that I can summarize all these different concerns that were brought to my attention, is, is it worth the risk to do anything close to where they have this landfill? We can't change the past. Granted, they dumped a bunch of stuff there back in the 90s, but we think, we, meaning pretty much summarizing the concerns of all those that have approached me, that some type of further study is required specifically with a neutral third party, nothing contracted by anyone else with other interests, whether or not this is the EPA or something else that's beyond my expertise. Specifically because it's, it has proximity both to a high school and established subdivision, that is what has warranted the concern. Also on page 4, on the second sentence, the TLO, Mental Health Trust, studied the land use in the surrounding area and the constraints of the site, and determined the playfields are the most fitting land use after existing fill is removed and replaced with appropriate fill ingrating. It is this disturbance that we're talking about that is raising most of the concerns. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Ms. Peace.
Yes, through the chair. The third-party study you hope will determine what? The precise boundaries of the 1960, 1977 landfill, or what third-party study, what were you hoping to accomplish with that?
On page 3, it talks about the site was monitored by the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation Division of Environmental Health for five years after it was closed, and determined no further mediation was required. Again, without any additional information, the concern was, was this in fact neutral enough? Is any, is any further information required to make sure that anything done on top as far as depositing additional fill material will not create a problem, some type of environmental impact?
Okay, thank you. And then if I may just follow up, you mentioned removal of the fill, and I think I saw it somewhere here in the packet, but was that removal of the port fill, or?
I'm not sure. I'll defer to the petitioner.
If you can find where you, I think I saw it too, but I don't know where.
Yeah, it's on page 4, at the very top, the second sentence there, but it really, it doesn't say. It just says...
Okay, thank you.
...removed. And again, just to piggyback on that, as stated by the petitioner, a lot of the concern is that this was, quote, in his words, rushed.
Thank you.
Sir, could we have your last name again, please?
I'll spell it for you. I apologize for that. V as in Victor, O N, space, and then L U H R T E.
Thank you. We missed that in the shuffle.
No problem.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to testify?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Randy Beilfuss.
Okay.
Last name is spelled B-E-I-L-F-U-S-S.
And you're representing?
I'm representing myself. I live up Highland Road.
You've got three minutes.
Okay. I would like to see the zoning on this as a R1A for the following reasons. The larger lots allow for more area with dealing with snow in winter without having to have the expense of hauling it out, and if you got to haul it out, the taxpayer is going to end up paying for it. When you've got a little bit more room, you've got more places to put snow right on the lot, and you don't end up closing everything off, because I've seen a lot of the small, real tight streets and anchorage here in wintertime, and it gets down to the point where it's tough to get through, especially for fire equipment, ambulance equipment and stuff. So that's one reason why I think a little bit bigger lot in our area definitely does, does do a little bit better. Another thing about having a little bigger lot and a little bit more spacing between the houses is because of the valley and the way it's situated, if you get a fire, starts in the upper end of the valley with a strong south wind, it's going to go through with it, because it'll make its own wind, and the closer the houses are, the more chances that one will just catch on fire and be like a row of Donimals. Another thing is the increase in traffic on Eagle River Highland Yosemite Drive intersection and the Glen High, because it is definitely, the more people we're getting, and that it needs to be dealt with and figured... needs to be dealt with and figured out what we need to do, so it doesn't end up clogged up all the time. On the PLI lands, I guess they want to turn some of it into sports fields and stuff after they fill, and that, my only concern about it is, if this ends up getting turned over to the public, then we got to pay to maintain it, maybe it'd be better off just to seat it down and just let it go as it is, and people can use it as they like. Also, I think there should be a vegetative barrier between the development and Eagle River Loop Road and Yosemite, and that's for the benefit of the residents that live there, to keep the road noise down, and for the benefit of the public, then you don't, you don't see it. It's kind of like Eagle Point, yeah, it's back there, and you can kind of see a few houses, but it's, it's pretty well buried in there and stuff. And I'm not against development, but let's not create problems for the area and make an ice rill like it got across the valley, that I see every day when I come out. That's what I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the commission? Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to testify?
I'm the last. My name's Andrew Brewer, I'm the new president of the South Fork Community Council.
You've got five minutes.
Is that good enough? Okay. This development was sprung upon us as a good proposition, we saw a lot of possibility in using the PLI land for the benefit of the community. That was when we worked on the comprehensive plan. Now we see that the PLI land is going to be designated for the private use of this community, meaning the immediate subdivision. Because of that, we are not seeing any win for the community, and the subdivision itself will be required to maintain that land. And that is where we're seeing a real problem, because how are the homeowners going to maintain this nineteen acres which is part of their subdivision? So that has not been addressed sufficiently for our concern, that the private land, which would have been public, will be adequately maintained. We have had allusion to the fact that a future administration might take on that, and that the homeowners might give it up. But that's a problem that we have with the PLI designation, being that it will be a private holding for the subdivision, and the community won't benefit. The R1 has been hashed around, this will be developed as an R1SL, but the slope of the land is not the same as Eagle Point, and that's why Eagle Point got the R1SL, and why this property really didn't need an R1SL designation, except, as they say, to limit the number of houses, that was strictly the reason. And they say that ninety-five will be the R1A standard. If six thousand square foot lots are built wherever they can be built, we're not going to get an R1A standard of eighty-four hundred. And that's really what the community was looking for, was to have a density which was not the same as what has been built across the valley. And that's what we've seen, clear cutting, and houses that are as close together as they can be, and as many houses as the developer can fit in. And that's why we wanted something that was more compatible with our community in this area. So that's the main, the main thing we're looking for, is compatibility with our area, something that's going to work, and not just that we can fit in as many houses as we can fit. And that's what we, that's what we're looking for. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Brewer? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to testify? Okay, you've got, I believe, three minutes and something for rebuttal, as I recall. Three minutes and twenty-four seconds, to be exact.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Jim Sawhill, and I'm happy to address some of the concerns that were expressed here tonight. Again, there are a lot of them, the concerns we heard when we have met with the public previously, so we've been aware of these issues. First of all, there's, there's a couple of issues that ring true. There's, there's issues over the R1A zoning, and what we believe is the compromise that we're offering to limit the density to the R1A density is a good compromise for this location. And the reason we believe it's a good compromise for this location is it's the identical special limitations that were placed on the Eagle Point subdivision, which is to the north and west of us. And you can see on page fifteen of your packet is an aerial photograph of the site that shows the surrounding area a little better than the photograph we have here. And so you can see Eagle Point subdivision that's east of the high school in its proximity to our project, we essentially touch almost on one corner, so we are geographically close to that. Second is transitioning. You know, one of the things you do with some zonings is to use it to step down your transition or your density. One of the things we have going for us in this particular development, due to the PLI portion that we're proposing being unsuitable for development, it provides a substantial buffer, a substantially used transition to the property to the south, to Eagle River Loop Road, and to the large lot property that's south of Eagle River Loop Road, which is also owned by the Mental Health Trust. The other thing in dealing with density and where the appropriate locations for certain zonings are, is typically when we're adjoining a collector road, which is Yosemite Drive, we typically locate higher density uses adjoining to a collector road, and we also typically, typically locate higher density uses next to schools, which provide open space and, you know, having higher density uses adjoining to that public use. So this particular case, we are adjoining a collector, we are joining a school, so typically even higher density than an R1 would be located at this location. So for those reasons, for density to reduce the impacts, we have the transitioning within our property, we're adjoining a collector road, we feel there's a strong case for the R1SL. Dealing with the concerns over the landfill, the landfill, we, again, on page, I believe, forty-eight of your packet, is the closure letter from DEC. This was monitored by the state agency responsible for landfills, and they determined no further action was required. We also had a study done by Hart Krauser to monitor the site for methane, to make sure that there was no methane escaping around the perimeter, and that's, that study came up negative, and it was part of the closure permit. So, and we will not be digging any material out of that PLI area. The only thing we will do is being adding material to that, so there'll be no digging, no removal of material. So that landfill was closed and considered adequate, two hundred thousand yards of material was placed on top of that, further capping it, and then all we will be doing is adding additional material to that. So there'll be no issue with the landfill, no concern, no health issue. And if you feel uncomfortable with snow disposal sites, we would be happy to remove that one. So, that I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate your indulgence for my slight overage.
Okay, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you. Mr. Sawhill, to help me familiarize myself, being new on this commission, and with Mental Health Trust lands, if you, if you, if you know it, or maybe someone here knows it, could you tell me what the mission is, or the mission statement, or their, their, the mental health, what are they, what are they supposed to be doing with their lands? What is their ultimate goal, and what's supposed to be used for?
The Mental Health Trust is essentially a land trust. They've been given millions of acres within the state of Alaska, and it's their mission to maximize the income from those properties for the benefit of the beneficiaries. So it's their mission, it's their requirement, to maximize the income off their properties. With that being said, we still got to conform to local plans, we still got to do something that's reasonable within a community, we can't come in and, you know, overdo it, so to speak. But they do have a requirement to maximize their income from their properties for the benefit of the beneficiaries.
So downstream, this ultimate, the residential, the R1, if it's rezoned that way, would be sold to a developer, or land separate individually, and then put into that trust to be used for those, for those goals?
Once this is rezone and the property is sold, the income from that property goes into the trust.
Thank you.
Ms. Yoshimura.
Mr. Sawhill, I have a lot of mixed emotions about this rezone. First of all, as it relates to the adjacent properties and the homes that are built there, and in regards to compatibility, in the marketplace, not everyone can afford to live in a five-hundred or a six-hundred or a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, so I have no objection to the density, or even the R1 zone, and I recognize the topographical challenges that you face with this particular piece of property. But I don't feel that I have enough information about what the plan is for this property as it relates to lot size, lot width, you know, buffering and all that sort of thing. So, and I think that that is a concern that could be at least partially alleviated to the Eagle Point Homeowners Association and the South Fork Valley Community Council, if we had more information about what indeed was going to go on this property. And so I'm disappointed that we don't have more. Is there anything you can do to assuage that disappointment?
I'll take a stab at it, Ms. Yoshimura. I believe that it's the charge of this commission to review this land use application as it applies to the Eagle River Comprehensive Plan, and the standards and goals that are within that plan, and the standards and goals that are applied to any land use decision, any land use request that comes before you. I think clearly this application meets all the standards for a land use decision, and it meets all the goals and objectives of the Eagle River Comprehensive Plan. You also have the option or the ability to place additional restrictions on the plan when you feel there's going to be some kind of impact in the area, or on adjoining neighborhood, and in this case, you've heard some of those concerns. I believe we have safeguards in place to deal with those issues. First of all, the basic premise here is the land use decision. Is R1 appropriate, and are those dimensions that are allowed within R1 appropriate here? And I believe they clearly are. The issue of buffering, I think, can be adequately addressed through another public process, another public hearing with the plating board, and I think those are the two issues that are kind of out there and foremost in people's minds, and I think when it comes to those two, we're good to go, I think we're okay. And I would urge you to support this land use today.
Thank you.
Ms. Peace?
I have a couple of questions. One, would you be amenable to condition that's to the effect that no portion of the land to be rezoned PLI, would, there would be no existing fill excavated or removed from the site, from the, if we were to rezone part of it, PLIs, as you've requested? And I say that because, I'm just a little nervous about, I know the staff wrote up the packet, but on page four, it does say that the TLO studied the land uses, the trust land office, and after existing fill is removed and replaced with appropriate fill ingrating, it'll be suitable for fields. I haven't seen this, I didn't look at the TLO study, so, but I'm just a little concerned about that.
So you're concerned about removing material from the landfill cap?
Right, excavating and removing anything that ought to stay capped.
And where would you add this additional condition?
The department recommendations. There isn't really a section addressing it now, but...
Well, I guess I would, I would point out that in order to do our natural resource extraction, to do our fill plan, it will require a conditional use permit, and it will require us to come back before you to deal with that issue. If, if you're not feeling comfortable with that, we could add under C1, where it requires a natural resource extraction permit for not less than five acres, and we could add a A under that, no fill to be removed from the landfill site? Would that work for you, Ms. Peace?
Yeah, I would say excavated or removed, I don't think it should be pushed around either.
Okay. I think it would be okay, as long as we added it under the, under that conditional use, to clarify that.
My only, if I may, just through the chair, concern is, that would still let you excavate or push around the old landfill if you needed to change things for sports fields, though.
Well, when we, when we try to create those sports fields, we're going to do it strictly by filling, we're not going to do any excavation to accomplish that.
Okay, I think it's all right in that location, then, if, of course, subject to the commission's approval. If I may continue?
Anything, yes, go ahead.
One of the speakers raised the question of sort of a better circulation pattern for this whole area, and, and some sort of reservation or intent near the Briggs Bridge, and I don't have the Eagle River transportation plan in front of me, but is there the intention of an additional, Ms. Yoshimura is shaking her head, no, that there's no, okay, I just wanted to ask that. And then, let's see, is there one more question? Guess those were the, only two. Oh, no, I did have another question, it had to do with the dimensions. What I'm hearing from testimony and in the community letters, there's a concern about density, but there is also concern about the aesthetics of having the very small lots, and, and the space between for fire suppression and that sort of thing. Is there any ability to have a certain percentage of the lots around the periphery that are eighty-four hundred square feet minimum? And I know that this could be addressed through the plat, but we're hearing it now, and it's, as I said, concern is not just the density, but the lot size.
That's a new one, I haven't heard this request before. We haven't done any subdivision planning or lot layouts, and, so I don't have a feel for how that mix is going to go. You know, we have a portion of the site that's relatively flat, and then, and then a pretty good portion that has quite, quite a good slope to it. So, you know, we see a mixture of, of lot sizes and density, but, you know, we haven't looked at what that mix might be, so I'm, I'm real hesitant to make a knee-jerk reaction to some kind of a proportioning of the lot sizes without more work.
Well, I guess it's not a totally new idea, I know that in the Hillside District Plan, where there are going to be two different densities abutting each other, there was to be some transitional lot sizes along the perimeter, but here, there's nothing abutting, and I don't know where the best visual impact of larger lots would be, so I guess, if you don't have any ideas, I don't have any specifics, so, just I'd ask.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, you, your name appeared on the screen, do you want to have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, fine. Ms. Yoshimura, your turn again.
Mr. Sawhill, who's going to own the PLI land? Is that going to be turned over to a homeowners association? Is it going to be retained by the Mental Health Trust authority? How is that property going to be managed in the future?
It will eventually be turned over to the homeowners association, and they will own the property. We had a short discussion with the municipality about this property, and they aren't interested in anything that requires maintenance or would increase their budget, so it was a very short conversation. I'm hopeful down the line, maybe somebody will change their position, and we'll see what happens then, but there are some private... But there are some private groups that are interested in fields, Cook Inlet Soccer, Lions Club, Little League, that could come in and manage those fields and maintain them. But the, the intent is for the homeowners to, to have that land. And, and they can then decide whether they want to let anyone else in there to use it, whether they want to improve it to, to full development or just let it grow up and be open space.
Any further questions, Mr. Sawhill? Okay, I've got a couple of questions. I'm the last guy. As I understand it, when you, if we go straight R1 SL, you can put 97 lots in there, is that correct?
That would be the maximum.
Maximum. Okay. And if you go R1A, 94 lots?
Um, R1A, that would be the theoretical density.
Theoretical density.
The theoretical density. I, I think we're going to have a hard time reaching the theoretical density we're, we're proposing here, to be perfectly honest, because of the strange shape of the, of the property and the hills. But the, my guess is the R1A will be quite a, quite a bit fewer lots, to be, again, real honest. And the, the reason being is, is the, the minimum lot widths. You know, we can go down to 50-foot wide lots in the R1. Again, I'm not sure we'll end up there. It depends on the housing styles we're trying to, to do. But if we go to 70-foot wide lots, we have, we get quite a bit less lot yield per lineal foot and the, and the road costs all stay the same. And so, what happens, my experience trying to cost out R1A developments is they don't pencil because they have about a 30% higher development cost because they require substantially more road frontage. So, it really kills the pro forma and trying to compete with people in the area.
So, what you're trying, but you want the flexibility that R1 offers you.
We want the dimensional flexibility of the width.
Okay. What if we were to limit you to, say, 90 lots and give you the R1?
We could probably live with that.
Okay. Next question, or just a comment on that PLI park type thing that may occur. Just be aware that Eagle River taxes themselves for their parks. And if we want a park, we'll tax ourselves for it. So, and we do that. I mean, we do that quite effectively out there. We probably have the best park situation that exists within the municipality because we, we have a, a steady stream of income. We know exactly what it's going to be and the politicians can't cut it and stuff like that. So, we may end up with some parks there if we decide we really want ball fields and things like that, so.
Excellent. You guys also plow your roads a little better than us.
Yes, yeah. And there's certain advantages to living in the boonies anyway. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Matter rests with the commission. And we'll take a positive motion to move this thing on. Ms. Dean moved and it's been seconded by Ms. Pease. Ms. Dean?
In the matter of case 2011-011, rezoning from PC Plant Community District to R1 with special limitations and PLI with special limitations, based on the Department of Recommendations on Page 8 and 9, I move to approve this repla, or rezone.
What we need to do too, just, I forgot to mention this before you, we, we need to deal with this in two parts. We need to deal with the R1 rezoning first, and then we need to deal with the PLI rezoning second. So, let's just deal first with the, with the R1 or the R1 SL or however we want to put that.
I guess I didn't quite understand why it would be broken up into two because the Department of Recommendations apply to both, don't they?
Well, we typically, just a second. You'll notice there's two recommendations there. If you read it on Page 8, it says the department recommends, you know, no more than X number dwellings could be conducted. And then it recommends the second part of it, which is the PLI zoning.
You're, you're correct. Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So, yes, in the matter of, if I'll restart, 2011-011, rezoning from PC District to R1 District with special limitations, based on the Department of Recommendation on Page 8, approval with special limitations, no more than 97 dwelling units may be constructed in R1. Now, being that said, that is just the first motion then?
Yeah, and we'll deal with that one. Yeah, we'll deal with that one once that's approved, then we'll go back to then deal with the second one.
Okay.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that recommend approval to be R1. And I think that'll be SL since it has special limitations.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, okay, and you want 97 dwelling units?
Yeah, if we go ahead and make them 90 and a lot sell for $100,000 apiece, it costs the owner $700,000. That's a lot of money it's going to cost to go from 97 to 90, potentially, you know, assuming they can get 90 lots out of it anyway. I'm not even sure if they can get 90 or 97 lots. It all depends on their layout. But I don't know if it's fair to limit with an arbitrary number just because 90 or 97. I think it's a very expensive number.
I just wanted to make sure we had the, the right motion. Ms. Pease? Ms. Pease, you were on the...
Yes, I was, I was going to suggest the 90 if the maker of the motion, but I think she just spoke to it, so.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I, I will, I would like to add, I would, since 97 is the number we'll be voting on, my reason for supporting that, or I think our reason, I should say, I think our reason for considering that should be that it's what would be allowed under the R1A, not that it would represent a greater profit to the developer. I think we're trying to look at the community interest here. And so, I just, Ms. Dean gave one set of reasoning, but I'm just putting forth a different set of reasons, of reasons that we're, we're trying to look at the densities in the surrounding area and what the community has spoken for.
Any further discussion? Ms. Yoshimura?
I'm going to support the motion although I am disappointed in the lack of information that was presented. I find disappointing that the community council or the Eagle Point Homeowners Association could see a bubble diagram, but we were not allowed that option. And I would hope that in the future that this project does have a thorough review. And I feel, even though I'm supporting it, I feel that a more appropriate zone would have been a PC.
Any further comments? Okay, well, I, I will be supporting the motion because I, it's going to come up in front of the platting board and they're going to have to deal with all of these little nitty gritty things. I think it's an appropriate use for the, for the land and it was in fact recommended in the Eagle River Comprehensive Plan. So, I think it's a, it's a good use for the land. So, if there's no further discussion, is there any objection? Okay, that is approved unanimously. And let's move on to the second part, dealing with the PLI portion.
In the matter of 2011-011, rezoning Plant Community District, PC from, to PLI, the Public Lands Institution District with special limitations, based on the special limitations listed on the packet on Pages 8 and 9, I move to approve.
Okay, it's been seconded by Ms. Pease. Ms. Pease?
Yes, would the maker of the motion entertain a friendly amendment to condition C1 to add the language that there will be no fill excavated or removed from the old landfill portion of this parcel?
My question on that is the definition of excavated. That's a very fuzzy word and I'm a little afraid of using that word. If you use the word removed, that's one thing, but excavated could mean just moving the dirt around. And I'm a little afraid of using that because if they do bring in fill and move it around, now they've actually broken that and they need a conditional use permit. So, I would have to leave off the excavated. I have no problem with removing fill and that be required, which they already have natural resource extraction as a conditional use permit in there, which would cover the fill removal if they chose to remove anything. But I'm going to leave off the excavation. I, I think that's just too, too fuzzy. Thank you.
Ms. Pease?
I just wanted to see if I could get a nod from the petitioner's representative. I thought I heard that they were only going to work on top of the cap of the old landfill. And I'm getting a nod on that, so it didn't seem to me that excavating into the old landfill was anything they wanted to do.
But there is other areas of that property that's PLI that is not part of the landfill that may be needing to be moved around. And I just...
Through the chair, if I may restate, no fill to be excavated or removed from that portion of the PLI, which is the old landfill.
Okay, I'll accept that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further comments? Any objections? Then that's approved. We're going to take about a 10-minute break. Call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Monday, February 7th, 2011. Back to order. Our, our next case is case 2010-139. Petitioners Alaska Auto Mall LLC and is a site plan review for a large retail commercial establishment. So, if we could hear the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, this is a site plan approval for Kendall Toyota. It's a large retail establishment. Kendall Automotive Group has operated a Toyota and Lexus car dealership in downtown Anchorage for many years. Having outgrown their existing facility, this site has been selected for expansion. The project is located at the southwest corner of the Old Seward Highway and Merlin Loop. The proposed building is 80, is approximately 80,000 square feet. The site is vacant and 12.79 acres. Under outdoor storage or display areas, no outdoor storage has been indicated in the semittal. However, several areas for the display of cars are shown on the plans. Three types of display areas are shown. The first is shown on Sheet 3 and it shows three raised concrete vehicle display areas. Sheet L105 shows a boulder field vehicle display area at the corner of Merlin Loop and Old Seward Highway. And the third type of display area is shown on Sheet L105 and it shows, I had written three, I miscounted, there are actually four, single vehicle display areas. The height of the raised concrete vehicle display areas is six inches. The single vehicle display area at the corner of Merlin Loop and Old Seward Highway is designed with a mass of raised boulders, boulders on which a vehicle will be displayed. The v, the boulders should be no higher than 30 inches above grade. Each of the raised concrete vehicle display areas is sized to display from one to three vehicles per area. Taken together, the car display areas lining Old Seward and Merlin Loop, plus the raised concrete display adjacent to the Merlin Loop entry drive would accommodate up to not 14 cars, but 15 cars on display. In the initial project's semittal, a truck was shown occupying the majority of the space in the designated community space. This use is not compatible with the intent of the public space. The presence of the vehicle would have turned the area from a public space into a display area. Following discussion with the petitioner's representative, the truck was removed from the plans. However, to ensure that a vehicle cannot be displayed in the space, a design element such as a raised planter or permanent seating should be incorporated into the design of the community space. I had originally thought that boulders might be able to go in there, but then on further reflection, they might be able to drive the car up on the boulders and display it. Under snow storage or removal, snow will be stored onsite in the area indicated on the site and landscape plans. Staff didn't take note of the fact that the snow, snow storage area is located approximately 46 feet from the nearest house on the west side. Tonight, I laid comments from Ginny Neshaim from DHHS where she questioned noise that would come from, that potentially could come from the auto repair shop that, that may be built sometime in the future from the snow storage activities or from a PA system that they may or may not be planning to use. That snow storage area is shown on Page 84 and it shows the snow storage area in proximity to the houses just to the west. If you turn to that sheet, that page, you, you can see that. In terms of pedestrian access, the site plan shows a pedestrian access from Old Seward Highway connecting to the building entrance. Raised sidewalks are shown along portions of the perimeter of the building. Under outdoor lighting, there is a change to the conditions regarding the lighting, the site lighting. The division met with representatives from the petitioner's representatives late last week to discuss the lighting. I laid some changes, modifications to the conditions on the table tonight. The changes I want to highlight are DA. The changes are in bold print, so that would change from one horizontal foot candles under 2A to 2.5 horizontal foot candles. And 2B would change as shown there. The previous 2B would be eliminated and replaced with all exterior site and building lighting shall meet the bug rating for an LZ-3 site. Under aesthetic characteristics, the conditions for the design of the building are generally I would like to add one condition regarding snow moving. That will read, "Snow moving activities shall be restricted to the hours of 7:00 a.m. through 10:00 p.m." And that's a typical standard the condition, the commission has no doubt seen before. That's all they have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, fine, go ahead and Mr. Prue.
Did you say snow removal or snow plowing?
I said, "snow moving activities." If you can have a better word, that's fine with me.
From 7:00 a.m. to?
10:00 p.m. They can only move snow during, from 7:00 a.m. in the morning until 10:00 p.m. at night, meaning late night after 10:00 p.m. until 7:00 a.m. in the morning when people are sleeping, sleeping, they're, would not be allowed to do any sort of snow removal, snow pushing activities. sleeping, there would not be allowed to do any sort of snow removal, snow pushing activities.
Is that consistent to the community?
Yes, it is.
Is it enforced?
Yes, it is. Janine Neshheim from DHHS is here tonight, but that's a condition we typically use. I just missed it this time.
Well, I just, I just see in the morning, when I go to work at 5:00 or 6:00 or whatever, and we've had a snow, that just about every commercial or business lot in the municipality of Anchorage has snow trucks on them at that time of the morning, before 7:00. And I'm just curious, I just want to make sure that we're not putting an undue restriction on this business if its neighbor has the ability to plow earlier than that.
I should clarify, when you asked that question, I was thinking about cases that come before the commission, and then they are enforced if we have that as a condition on a particular project. Then, yes, it is enforced, or would be, because we have a condition for that.
And to me, it doesn't make any sense to do that, but I can see the late at night, but not first thing in the morning before the public. I mean, it is a nuisance to the public, and it actually could be detrimental to the public where they go into a business at 7:00, which is your high-traffic time for commuters. I just, can you give me a little history on why the commission did that?
Well, what we're seeing here is that if they're doing any snow pushing with all the beep, 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 and they're plowing the very, very large parking lot here, that they can only do that during daylight hours. Otherwise, as you said, it would be a nuisance to do it in the night when people are sleeping.
Okay, well, it gets daylight like at 9:30 in the morning, it gets dark at 4:00, but I assume what you mean is during normal course of business?
Yeah, during the winter months.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair. Is the school site fenced? Do you know?
I'm not certain if it's fenced or not.
But the way I read this plan, there's no fence along...
If it's not shown, it may not be there. I take it back. There is a fence along the backside of Taku Elementary. There's, I think, some sort of repair shop next to it, and there is a fence, at least for that portion of it. I don't know if the fence extends around the entire school site.
Okay, I'll bet the petitioner will know that, so thanks.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, fine, I'm going to have the petitioner come forward, please. You have 10 minutes, and how much time would you like to reserve?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Jim Sawhill. I'm with Lowndesbury and Associates, and I'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With me tonight is members of our design team. We have representatives from Kendall Toyota. We have a representative from ECI Hire, the project architect. I'm a representative from RSA, the electrical designer for the lighting. And a representative of Corvus Design, the landscape architect for the project. So if you have any detailed questions on any of those issues that I'm not able to handle, we can call up the expert in those appropriate disciplines to help us out tonight. We've gone out to the public with our project with a couple of meetings. We met with the Taku Campbell Community Council, and we met with the Briar Cliff Townhome Association, which is the townhomes that are immediately to the west of the project. And as you saw on your packet, we had a letter of support for our project from the townhomes, so we were happy to receive that. What we have before us tonight is a conditional, or a conditional use for a large retail establishment. It's kind of unusual to have an automobile dealership coming through the large retail establishment. I don't think the ordinance was really written about those uses. It was mostly the big boxes. But we are a building over 20,000 square feet, and we are a retail use, so here we are today. There's a couple of things that have come through the project, through the conditional use, is, you know, first of all, I think we have a very well-designed building. I think you've seen the copies of the elevations. The front elevation was based on a prototype that came from Toyota and was adapted to this site, to this location, and to our environment. We also had the project team working very hard on all sides of the building and the design elements, and I think we have a good design that provides a very attractive building. We varied materials, we varied colors, glass, we varied the roof lines, all in conformance with the large retail establishment ordinance, and we feel like we have a nice project that does comply. We also have provided arterial and perimeter landscaping in conformance with the code. One of the important things in a large retail establishment is to provide 25-foot buffers adjacent to all residential uses, and we've done that for the Briar Cliff and the R2M vacant area to the south, and also to the area to our northwest. So we have those additional buffers with the buffer landscaping. We've also gone ahead and designed this site in accordance with the site lighting requirements that will be in the new Title 21. That was a request of staff at our initial meeting, our pre-application meeting. So we've gone ahead and gone the extra mile on our lighting and come in with an LED lighting plan, a lighting plan that meets the current LEED requirements, and we don't have any lights spilling out into the neighborhood or the street. And we've also made provisions in our design to be able to reduce the lighting levels when the business hours are not in effect to 50%. So we think those are all very positive things for the development. We have worked with staff to modify the conditions of approval on lighting, and the changes that Ms. Ferguson has recommended, we support and gets rid of some of the conflicts that were in their original request. We would like to request an additional modifications to the conditions of approval, and that's condition number three. And what we're basically requesting is to strike the second sentence. Currently, it reads, "The designated public space, community space, shall not be used for display of vehicles." We understand that, and we have no problem with that condition. But we do not want to add the additional elements they're asking for, because mainly we want to keep the area open. It's the main entrance into the development. We would like to maintain the free flow of traffic through there, people traffic, and just to keep it as an open area. We don't feel it's appropriate to do anything that's going to block that area from access from our customers or emergency access into the site. As far as the additional condition of approval, which staff has added tonight to limit our snow plowing hours, we have a problem with that. A lot of the snow plowing is done at night after hours. Unfortunately, we didn't get these additional comments until tonight, so it was a little tough to prepare for that. But we are providing fencing around the perimeter of our site. Our fencing will have slats that will help attenuate some of that noise. We do have a 25-foot buffer on that one side, so we are quite separated from those units. And my recollection is none of those units have windows on that side. The windows are all internal. So I think those issues provide additional mitigation for the potential noise issues. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Mr. Prue?
Thank you. Through the chair. Mr. Sawhill, would you or the owners be able to live on the snow removal at night where equipment with backup alarms or tailgates that bang if you move snow at night with a dump truck? You know, when it comes back down, it bangs at night. Those two things, to me, are the two noisiest implements of a snow removal, the backup alarm and the tailgate hitting in the dump truck, which really means it's heavier gear. It's a loader, and it's dump trucks, not pickup trucks where you're plowing the snow.
We would have no objection to that restriction, because we typically plow with pickup trucks with plows on the front, which don't have backup alarms. But the front-end loaders and the loading out of snow would be something that we're hoping not to do very much. We have a pretty significant snow disposal area there, right next to our drainage pond, so we're hoping to not have to haul much snow. But if we were using equipment with backup alarms or dump trucks, we wouldn't have any problem to those restrictions, to the hours.
Can you come in at a later date, stack indoor or transport if you had to during...
Yes, yes, we could.
Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, through the chair. Mr. Sawhill, sir, are you asking for snow plowing 24 hours a day?
Any further questions for Mr. Sawhill? Okay, you've got 2 minutes and 40 seconds for rebuttal. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, you've got 4 minutes and 40 seconds. Okay, I'm going ahead and opening the public hearing right now. Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Second call, is there anybody that wishes to testify? Mr. Sawhill, would you like to come back up and...
Anything further unless you have questions?
Any further questions, Ms. Pease?
Yeah, I don't know whether this would be for Mr. Sawhill or for staff, but I'm looking at the west, yeah, the west side, and that's the one where I can't really tell what makes it, what meets the code requirements for variety of visual interest. And I realize that it doesn't appear to face a road or residence, a public road or residence. But if one of you could explain, I mean, obviously, I can see there are no windows. I can't really tell what other variation there is. Is it just color variation on this wall?
Ms. Pease, yes, it's the color variation.
So it's a...
And there are, you know, a band of windows as well.
On the west side?
Yes.
Or the little block of... Do you mean the glazing overhead door? That's the only windows I see on the west side.
Yes, I think further down towards the other side of the building, there's also some glazing there as well.
Any further questions for Mr. Sawhill? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The public hearing is closed. The matter rests with the commission, except a positive motion. Being moved by Ms. Dean. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Frederick. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair. Can I ask one question of staff before I finish my motion?
Yes, you may.
My question of staff is, we were just discussing the requirement of no snow removal between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., and we were curious where it was in the packet, where that information existed.
Ms. Dean, it isn't in the packet. I failed to make that a condition, so I was doing it tonight.
Okay, I misunderstood. So that isn't in a condition unless I go ahead and add it in as a department recommendation?
That's true.
Okay.
And if I may, Ms. Pease, I was looking at the wrong elevation. You are correct, there is no glazing. The only difference is the colors, as we first talked about.
And if I may, through the chair, then, I know we've made a motion, but could I clarify whether color alone is sufficient variety along that wall?
Well, they have color changes, and then they also have these, for lack of a better word, these sort of striations in the building phase. But ultimately, and then they do have a dark color band at the bottom of the building, but it's up to the commission to determine whether or not, you know, it meets the conditions.
Okay, go ahead and let Ms. Dean make her motion, and then if we have to make some changes, we'll allow that to happen at that time. Okay, Ms. Dean?
Okay, in the case of 2010-139, site plan approval for Kendall Toyota of Anchorage, I move to approve, along with the department recommendations on page seven and eight, deleting the line, second line on item number three that the petitioner requested.
Okay, and that's been seconded by Mr. Frederick. Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair. I'm going to, without knowing anything about what the rest of the commissioners feel, I'm going to just go ahead and say that I think that I'd like to request a little more visual interest along the west elevation in compliance with the code. I realize that this is not facing immediately on a public street, but it is a 350-yard-long wall, and color appears to be the main change, the only change really, along that whole wall. So we'll see if there's anyone else. I don't have immediate suggestions, but I would just request that staff and the petitioner perhaps could work a little bit further on that facade. That's a friendly amendment, so it needs to, I guess...
Ms. Dean?
I don't accept that at this point.
Okay, Ms. Pease, you want to put that in as a motion?
Oh, sure, why not? I'll propose as a motion.
And the motion is?
The motion is that the petitioner shall work with staff to incorporate additional elements of visual interest along the west elevation.
Okay, please push the button on your machine. Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Please proceed, Ms. Dean. Ms. Yoshimura?
No, I was just going to make a comment to Ms. Pease that, you know, I think this building does comply, and I am accepting of the color variations. I think it is a much more attractive building than the Walmart building in Midtown that we approved, that is soon to have its balloon off of. So I think it's pretty, it's pretty good.
Okay, is there any further comments on Ms. Dean's motion? Okay, are we ready to vote? Okay, is there any objection? Okay, the final public hearing tonight is case 2011-014, major amendment to master planned natural resources extraction site for extended operating hours for Akutina Site 1. And let's hear the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thirty-seven public hearing notices were mailed for this item. We did not receive any negative responses back, and today we received comments from the Chugiak Community Council, and those were late before you this evening. This is a request for extended hours of operation for a previously approved natural resource extraction project on the southwest side of the village of Akutina. It is a major amendment because of what the applicant is requesting. Basically, the petitioner is requesting to extend the hours of operation from the usual 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to 24 hours a day for 60 separate occurrences through the remaining life of the project. The case, excuse me, the original natural resource extraction case was approved in 2007. In 2008, the petitioner did submit and was granted a similar request to tonight's request that was for 12 occurrences of 24 hours of operation. that was for 12 occurrences of 24 hours of operation. The request is necessary because the applicant supplies gravel and asphalt for municipal and state road building projects, and many of those construction projects take place overnight from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM, and the applicant wants to be able to supply gravel and asphalt for those projects. There is an attached list of state upcoming projects in the package, and there will be muni projects that will be coming along, either that are already approved or that could be on the April bond that's coming up in a couple of months. I'm just going to go quickly through it. The department doesn't have any real objection to this case. On pages four, five, and six, we have our standard lengthy list of extended hours of operation for a gravel project. I do want to modify a couple of the conditions base briefly. On page five, Roman numeral seven, VIi, the last sentence of that condition says, "A minimum advance application of 30 days prior to startup of limited operations is required." I want that to say, "Limited operations" is desired, a minimum of 30 days is desired. It is conceivable that there will be certain bids and contracts that will have less than a 30-day lead time, and if that was to say, "Required," it would automatically preclude the applicant from even bidding on those road jobs. And then a condition on page six, number three, "Maximum noise levels during extended hours of operations," is how the paragraph begins. We're not certain where those noise levels came from, so we would just want to delete condition three, and then instead of having to renumber the others, we're just going to stick in a placeholder condition. Number three would read, "Department of Health and Human Services and the Development Services Division will respond to noise complaints." It's already a code requirement, it's what we do anyway, I just don't want to renumber the conditions. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Is there any questions for staff, Mr. Pruse?
Thank you. Do you see any restrictions to the imported materials during nighttime operation?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pruse, would you give me an example of what would be imported?
Unusable material, dump site, where they typically take material in, they round robin, they haul out the good stuff, bring in other stuff to be processed, whether it's asphalt, peat, sands.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pruse, I'm, I'm not aware that that has been going on, but one of the conditions does specifically state that it is for gravel and asphalt for the road construction projects, period. If it's not a road construction project, the 24 hours do not apply.
Okay, typically, from experience, the contractor will try to load the truck in both directions to be efficient.
Sure.
So if broken asphalt off a job is going back to be reprocessed, reused, unusable materials, a lot of aggregate businesses take in that type of material, and, and so the trucks would then be coming in and dumping one load, going and loading with the product that you just spoke of, and, and leaving the area, which, when you do that, creates a different environment and a different noise scenario.
Sure.
So that my question is, is that included in their request, excluded, or hasn't been addressed?
It is not allowed on page five, Roman numeral VI, "Limited operations," which is the 24 hours, "May include hot plant, asphalt batch, and supporting operations, including hot plant operations, loading and hauling asphalt and gravel from the pit site to the project site."
So you're saying that import of materials during this operation is excluded?
It is excluded from the overnight part of it. They can do it during the regular hours of operation.
Would you, would you mind then having that put in to your recommendation, that, that language?
So that anytime there's a 24-hour project going on, they cannot import anything?
No, during the nighttime hours.
During the nighttime hours.
That's, that's my question, are you allowing import during the nighttime hours?
No, sir.
Okay.
Only.
I don't, I don't, I don't read that here. That's my question. So I'm, I'm trying to clarify what, to decide what, what is authorized and what isn't authorized.
Okay, the, the way I read that.
Me, the, the way I read this is it is authorized, slightly different than what you just said.
Okay, the, the way I read it is exporting from the site is authorized, but if you'd like to add it specifically, no objection, because that is the intent.
I'm not here to, I'm just, I don't know whether it should or shouldn't be, I'm just asking what your, what your, and if, if it hasn't been, if, if it has been excluded, that they can't do it, then that, that, those noise and all that information and what they're going to do is, is different. It's a whole different operation.
Certainly it is.
With different noise, different characteristics, so that, that was my question.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, Mr. Potter.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter with LHKM. With me tonight in the audience are representatives of Akutina, Inc., the property owners, and Alaska Aggregate Products, the operator of the extraction operation, and the applicant tonight. Like to retain two minutes rebuttal, I don't know that'll be necessary, but that is what I'd like to do.
Very good.
Again, as, as indicated by the staff, this is a request for a modification to an existing master plan under the PC district, of which it did have time-limited operations. This operator did come back in with modifications to the program and sought a limited amount of nighttime 24-hour day operations, of which eight of those 12 occurrences were utilized. He, four additional times is not adequate to do any pursuit of any contractual obligatory work for the state or the city, but they did do eight night operations as being requested for 60 occurrences tonight. And in that, there were no complaints on noise, no complaints about anything. In fact, one call from a very vocal village resident that asked why it was so quiet. So I would say it was a success. There were door hangers and notices placed on all the doors within the village area. There was a DOT-type lit movable sign that was on a trailer that identified in advance when the operation was going to occur. They also placed ads in the navigator so that everybody's aware of that nighttime operation. As the staff indicated, the key issue is that the state and the city have gone to, especially the state, a different type of program in an attempt to avoid conflicts between drivers on the highways and the, and the primary arterials and collector roads and the construction activities. So they tried to separate the, the key items of those work, especially paving. Having a batch plant that you can operate close to the proximity of the road project would be key. For example, this facility was the closest available batch plant operation to the Glen Highway reconstruction that just occurred, directly adjacent to the frontage road, which is directly adjacent to the site, and they could not bid on the project because they didn't have the nighttime operation capability. There should have been savings to the general public, there would have been a lot less truck traffic, because typically that material is coming out either of the valley or from Midtown or South Anchorage. So those trucks are going to be on the road, and while we may be considering the noise issues directly adjacent to the village, which we believe we've overcome, there are a lot of other issues associated with allowing another operator at this location to be available to participate and bid on those projects. So the 60 days is an adequate time to accommodate the ability to know that you can contractually accommodate the bid requirements and format that the state and the city would put out. So that's why the 60 days, we've given identified projects that are coming out, and we think that that shows clear justification. We've snuck up on this process, and it's been done deliberately, where we had the operation, and the operation that we're talking about tonight is just the south portion down by the Akutina River. So it's the furthest and most extreme distance away from the village site. It's down in elevation about 50 to 60 feet from the village elevation as well, and it's a process area that's, that's very well buffered. So the trucks come out and go directly on the frontage road. So they are about 40 feet away from all the trucks that would be going past here hauling asphalt anyway. The frontage road is that directly next to the highway, which is, does not have vegetation between the frontage road and the highway. And just to emphasize that act, in talking to Department of Health, in many occasions when you go out there and you do your sound measuring, the highway violates the, the noise levels at the property line, so you can't even tell if the noise is from onsite or offsite because the highway background noise is so high. And I believe they're here to indicate that as well tonight. So we believe that we can operate, we've got a proven track record. Once we have that up and going operation, then looking at this southern portion, we went for the 12 occurrences. We used eight of those nighttime occurrences and operating periods and operated without complaint and showed that we could do it and develop that track record. We're coming back again, we have support of the tribal council at the village of Akutina, as well as support of the Chugiak Community Council, and you know how organized they are, and we continue to maintain good communication with the community council and the tribal organization. With that, I did want to indicate that on the conditions recommended, the language as supplied by staff for Roman numeral seven is, is fine. There are times, based on the lack of clarity in some of the language in this condition, when it says the advance of the bidding of the project, it's unclear if that's bidding when the RFP goes out, if that's when the bids are submitted, if it's when the bid's awarded. So we suggested that the 30 days was a difficult time period, and what we wanted to have was just as much advanced notice as possible, not knowing exactly how the contracting would be done. But we've, we've held to our word that we would give that appropriate notice, we've got a track record and would like to go forward. I think I'll go ahead and just jump right into a question that Mr. Pruse asked, and I think I know where he's going, so I'll see if I adequately read between the lines. In a typical highway project, like we saw on the Glen Highway and/or the Seward Highway or some of the other major roads, there's a rotor mill process that goes on, and they take a large piece of equipment that basically grinds the asphalt, or most of the asphalt layer, off of the highway. That gets loaded, just, just like you have a conveyor belt coming out of that, like a snow blower does, loads right into a, a truck, and that's typically hauled someplace. Often, it's taken back to the location of the batch plant because it's often put right back in as a component of the mix at the batch plant and then recycled back out. It's not to say that that would be the case here, but it makes sense that from an operational standpoint, those are the trucks that are operating, they're bringing asphalt to the project, they'd be the ones that would take the rotor milled material back. It would be stockpiled in the south area and stockpiled and then utilized at a later time during operating hours. So i-if that's what you were getting at, there is scrap asphalt off the side, if there's any fragmenting of the asphalt on the sides of the road, depending on what the road's built like. But most of that material comes, it's just grinding as a result of that. So in this case, we would anticipate that we'd be able to do the full contracting for the project and be able to take the rotor milled material back to the location, fill that truck up with asphalt, go back out, pave the road. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Potter? Uh, Mr. Pruse?
Thank you. Mr. Potter, so you're of the opinion that this allows you to import material off the project into the pit at night?
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple of things, and what I had hoped to do with the map is to show that on the far map, there's a red boundary that shows the full extent of the extraction operation, which includes at the very south end, the first area that was extracted and had historically been a gravel pit. That is where the batch plant, that's where all the screening activity and, and all that happens, and materials are stockpiled. So in our nighttime operations, the way we explained it to the city is that there would be no activity during those nighttime hours north of the line that we're proposing, where the primary operation is down by the river. That is where the batch plant and the screening plant and all the stockpile piles are. They would have to stockpile enough material during the day south of that line to be able to operate from that base in the batch plant area throughout the evening hours. They couldn't be hauling north of that line, which gets you closer to the village. So while we did not, and I'll admit, we did not necessarily split out the issue of rotor milled material, it was a good issue to bring up tonight, and it really is part of the contracting process. I suppose if it's a big deal that you'd have the rotor mill material go into a truck, haul it someplace else, have that truck come back and do that. Based on our track record at the operation, I don't think that that's necessary, and I think it actually puts the trucks and the noise around the community more than what we're proposing, so.
Well, there's a follow-up, that obviously there's conflict in what administration thinks that you're allowed to do, no import, which, which I will tell you that that's typical of, of destruction practices, is whether it's mill, rotor mill chips, broken asphalt, concrete, whatever. And, and you're saying that if that was allowed, you would put it in the same area, the south end, part of the pit, not, you would dump there, even if you weren't going to use it in that night's operation, you'd still dump it to the far end?
Yes.
Okay.
Nothing north of, of the line. So we've got the area that was on PC that we have the master plan in, the area to the north was actually zone R7 and has a conditional use for the rest of the extraction. So everything would be held at the south end. It would be dumped, stockpiled, and we have to have all materials that are going to go out of that site, stockpiled, south of that line.
Okay, so before I ask the gentleman over there, how to solve that issue if we can, the, the, how do you power your processing and/or your hot plant? Is it through generation or permanent power from, say, Chugiak?
Boy, I'm going to bring down the experts that actually operate it. Come on down and put it on the record.
Please state your name for the record, sir.
I'm Scott Andrews, I'm with Alaska Aggregate. It's power generation, Mr. Pruse.
Okay.
Diesel-powered plant.
Generator, diesel-powered generator?
Diesel-powered generator, that's correct.
And would they be located in this southern part?
It's all located within that same proximity, that small isolated zone that, that Tim has talked about, that we're, we had committed to holding to.
Okay. So, so now the question with Mr. Potter, sitting standing here, is on the import with, with the municipality, with the, the staff, your, your assumption is that they can't import the chips, the rotor mills?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pruse, my recollection, and this goes back to 2008 the first time, is that in order to avoid the noise-related issues you've raised, all the stockpiling is done during the day, and what happens overnight is gravel and asphalt leave the property, and that was the extent of it. That's my recollection.
Right, and, and the issue, just to clarify there, is that the gravel that's currently being utilized in the, in the processing there is material that comes from north of the line, in the area behind the village. So the issue was the operation of loaders and/or big trucks off-road tr- So the issue was the operation of loaders and/or big trucks, off-road trucks, bringing material all the way back down, that that nighttime operation of those would not occur behind the village. All the material would be brought south, processed, stockpiled. There wouldn't be any screening going on and those kinds of things that are those noisemakers at night. You would have to process, stockpile all your material. So effectively what you have operating is what you're going to use to load the batch plant, which would be a loader. And you'd take from existing piles. The rotor milled material would be brought in, dumped as part of the round robin event on the site, south of that line, and stockpiled. If it needed to be processed the next day, it could be processed the next day.
But it says here that extended hours will only be allowed for extraction slash processing, which means crushing, that's processing, screening?
And...
Am I reading this right?
Well, you know, here we go, kind of like the definition of excavation. If it wants to be that there's no screening, if you want to differentiate for me, processing, a lot of people say that processing of asphalt is taking the material from a stockpile, loading it into the batch plants and processing it to make asphalt. That's the intent of that processing. We're not going to be screening material at night during this time period.
Okay, well, again, yeah, just trying to clarify it. I'm not disagreeing with you.
No, that's...
I'm just trying to, I'm just, you know, if it's processed, me, from my experience, processing is all the above. It is screening, crushing, making asphalt, you know, all that's up there, you're processing, you're taking material from A and putting it and making it to something different and you're going through some process to do that. And so, and I appreciate, you know, south of the line and all that's going to be done and everything north, the actual crushing and screening and processing will be done there. I just don't know how you put that to writing, what your intention is, if that...
That's exactly what we explained during the pre-op meeting. And if you want us to provide either on the record tonight, since that's basically what we've done already, or if you'd like us to put a clarifying letter to the staff that can go along with this approval, that you'd see when you approve the resolution at your next meeting, I hope you'd be able to see that, take that into consideration before you act on the resolution.
Thank you.
That'd be fine.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair, Mr. Potter, is there a reason why the number of days for the 24-hour operation is jumping from eight up to 12? Eight was what was used in 2010, up to 60? And it's a big jump?
Sure. I can try and answer it and then we might want to ask Mr. Prus. But when a contractor is looking to bid on multiple different projects, the likelihood of them getting it all, even though they'd like to get all of them, they don't. But they have to be able to have the contractual capacity to bind themselves in a contract when they submit that bid to the state or the city. So you have to have enough operating days to be able to say that you'll be able to do that. And the 60 days, based on the projection of the number of days that they would likely be able to compete for and win, and then have enough capability to bid on multiple jobs at the same time and hope to get those. Because if you didn't have those days or you already opted them out, you couldn't win one job and then all of a sudden win another job and then not have enough time to operate. So you have to have a chunk and that's why it is. It's based on the types of jobs that come along, what the projection is for the time that you'd be involved, and the ability to be in a position where you can contractually obligate yourself.
Although it says 24-hour operations may be conducted year-round, is that likely or are we really talking about the summer or the non-freezing month?
The 24-hour operation for really processing and making asphalt and that is traditionally and typically a construction season time period. And that's what we're looking at. I'm not going to preclude that there may be some odd thing that comes up on an emergency basis where it happens differently.
Okay, through the chair, just one question to staff. I guess I worry that, or I'm not worried, but concerned that eight days didn't seem to register with anybody, but if it were 60 days in a row, maybe it would. Is there any thought, has any thought been given to that?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Pease, the idea that it would be 60 days in a row, I think is quite unlikely. But what we've placed our reliance on is that this is a conditional use. Whether it's one day in a row or 100 days in a row, if there's a violation, code officer for this area will be out there that afternoon and I will be with him and the site would be shut down or the complaint addressed.
Okay, thank you.
I think just to add a little bit to that, one of the things that was said at the meeting with the tribal council is that their incentive in support of this is that it results in more material being taken out and the end period of the total operation being sooner rather than later. And that is what they portrayed as why they were willing to go with a 60-day period. You know, it's not the whole summer. It could be 60 days in a row. It's doubtful that that would happen, but that is the possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Potter? Okay, thank you. You've got a minute and 53 seconds for rebuttal. Opening the public hearing, does anybody wish to testify in case 2011-014? Does anybody wish to testify in case 2011-014? I guess not. Mr. Potter, you have a minute and 53 seconds to rebut.
Only to reiterate, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, that we've gone after this in a slow, methodical manner and created a track record, proven ourselves. AAP has proven itself as an operator. And because of the type of contracting that occurs now, it makes sense, we believe, and we've gotten the support of the tribal council and the community council now that they've been able to see and watch the project. The staff's been able to go out there and look at dust, look at noise and use their meters on the noise. There is a code enforcement officer, Tim Hammerick, that lives north of this site and travels by it twice a day. And he routinely, if there's any issues, calls and asks what's going on. And he's not shy to stop and check in at the scale house and just ask how things are going. So it's got a lot of eyes on it. It happens routinely and I think they've done a very good job and will continue to do that. So we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Matter rests with the commission. Ms. Pease has made a positive motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Wilson, Ms. Pease?
In the matter of case 2011-014, I move to approve this major amendment to the natural resource extraction site to allow the extended hours of operation with the conditions of approval recommended by staff in our packet on pages four through six with the following changes requested by staff. On item 1B7, replace the word "required" with "desired" so that it says 30 days prior to the startup of limited operations is desired. And on page six, remove the current wording for number, condition number three and replace it with words to the effect that DHHS and, there was another agency's acronym in there, which Mr. Barrett's going to help me with, Environmental Services Division, will respond to noise complaints.
Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Wilson. Ms. Pease, you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, I think the, this idea of 24-hour operations has been successful in a previous year, in 2008. There were no noise complaints in the eight instances of 24-hour operation. I think it's also important that the Chugiak Community Council has submitted, we have it in our, before us in writing, no objection to this extension of hours of operation. We do not have a written objection from the native village of Klutna. There's an implication that there's been no objection. And we've heard through testimony here from the petitioners representative that in general the native village of Klutna has the desire to expedite excavations in the hopes that the operation will move along faster and they'll get to the renovation or rehabilitation phases of their project. This is a benefit to the community, provided the noise limits are met, in that it enables asphalt and other products to be hauled to road construction projects during hours of low traffic on the roads. So for those reasons, I'll be supporting this measure.
Okay, Mr. Prus?
Well, I don't know, I'll try this first time as a friendly amendment first. To add the, I guess, add under extended hours, number two, the term being able to round robin or import material during the 24-hour operation. And the reason being that it's more efficient, it may allow for less nighttime operations, i.e. where they're, instead of prolonging the project, it may shorten it up. It's more efficient, obviously, it's a benefit to the public. And as long as the import material is going south, the south line, I'm not sure where that is, but the southern portion of the property, which is where the nighttime operation is going, I believe that that's probably fairly critical to the efficiency of a nighttime operation. And then on number two, where they talk about processing, allowed for extraction and processing, that should also be limited to nighttime to the southern boundary of the property for noise.
I think I need just a little help to understand where this is going. So if we're looking, if through the chair, if we're looking at number two on page six?
Correct.
Extended hours will only be allowed for, and you want to not limit it just to extraction processing of gravel, you want to insert something else in there?
I want to insert the, well, first of all, I guess we can switch it around. Number one would be add the word "limited to the southern portion of the property," extended hours, as Mr. Potter testified.
Okay, number one, on page four?
Mr. Goofy.
Number one on page four.
The numbering system is a little confusing here. You've got V triple I with 1, 2, 3 under it, and then you flip to page six and paragraph two pops up. So just, the V triple I should probably have those ones, twos and threes in parentheses to separate them from the normal 1, 2s and 3 paragraphs. That makes it a little, so. So you're talking about adding this to, on page six, to the number two at the top of the page? That's where you want to have this stuff?
Well, you know, wherever it's appropriate.
Well, you need to tell us. Give us a hand, you're the expert.
Yeah. What about that?
Could I make a suggestion? It would seem to me that it might fit better in, on page five in Roman numeral six, that limited operations may include, so we want to say what it may include. Round robin, importing of material to the site.
That would fit there.
Including round robin?
Of imported material. And then somewhere where it restricts that, round robin or the processing, like on page six, number two, the first paragraph, first sentence where it says extraction, processing, somewhere I think it should say, it should be, that should be restricted to the southern portion of the property.
Okay, so if we added the words, after, okay, it starts extended hours will be, will only be allowed for extraction slash processing of gravel and then insert on the southern...
Boundary or...
Portion of the site?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I could just butt in real quick, the application is for the master planned area, which is the south portion of the site. So the legal description for this piece is the southern piece that I was talking about. So by virtue of that being all that's in front of you today, that's the only thing that you're changing.
Okay, so it stated somewhere...
Already done.
So that's covered, okay. Well, I accept the amendment.
Okay.
Okay, any more, any more comments from commissioners?
Could I go back to that, the number two on page six?
Mr. Frederick?
There's some wording in there, it just bugs me. We're not doing extraction at, in extended hours, right? We're just doing processing and we're, and we're doing gravel and asphalt, right?
I think so.
It would seem to me that we would say that extended hours will only be allowed for furnishing gravel or asphalt to, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Right? Am I wrong?
Well, extraction, that term also, you're going to remove something in situ material, virgin bank and putting it into a truck is extraction. Now, whether they, they extract the northern part of the property and haul it to the southern part and then take it out of the pile, or they actually dig in virgin ground...
Yeah, but we're not talking about what goes on somewhere else.
That's the question.
Right. But you go back to Roman numeral five, on page five, activities specifically prohibited from limited operations include gravel extraction. So we're talking about digging new gravel out of the ground, breaking up rocks, screening it, none of that stuff is allowed during extended hours.
Now, that conflicts with number two.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I'm just trying to simplify too. So extended hours will only be allowed for the supply, furnishing, I'm not going to wordsmith it, but I...
Exporting?
Export of gravel and asphalt to...
I would, I would actually delete extraction, processing and just insert...
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about deleting those two words, right?
Yeah, just extract, and then refer to Roman numeral five, those authorized.
But you got to get asphalt in there too because it's limiting.
Yeah.
Mr. Barrett, you see where we're headed with this?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Frederickson, yes, I do. I apologize for the wording on number two. It should not say extraction, processing. The intent of condition two on page six...
Was just to limit where it was going.
Is all of this activity is for the road projects, correct?
Right, because not for regular commercial sale, right? So if you can word that appropriately and bring it back to us, wouldn't that finish version one?
You just take out extraction, but allowed for processing of gravel to be used.
I think just get rid of the two words.
Yeah.
Just use on state and municipal projects. And it restricts what the activities are back on page five. Does that, does staff agree with that?
Extended hours will only be allowed for?
Supplying? How about just supplying?
Supplying gravel and asphalt to be used on, supply. There's got to be a verb in there somewhere.
We just say supplying, and then there's no nouns, and then you go back and figure out the products from the previous page. Okay, so allowed for supplying state and municipal road construction projects. Does that work? Okay, I think we got at least a couple nods. I accept that. Deleting extracting slash processing of gravel to be used only on and replacing it with the verb supplying.
Got asphalt. Did we add asphalt?
No, you want gravel and asphalt?
Yeah, because that's what we're allowing.
Okay, supplying gravel and asphalt.
And if you say only gravel, you can't do asphalt.
I wasn't going to put in either, and then you have to go back to. All right, supplying gravel and asphalt.
Okay, I think we're there.
We have to get the second to approve.
We just made a sausage.
I'm in.
How about aggregate?
Okay, let's reread what we get, so we make sure we've got this stuff right. Ms. Pease, why don't you go through and pick out all the changes?
Okay. On page five, on Roman numeral six, limited operations may include round robin importing of material to the site, comma, and then continue with existing words, hot plant, asphalt batch, and supporting operations, and so on. And then on Roman numeral seven, we replace the word required with desired. On the next page, under number two, it will now read extended hours will only be allowed for supplying gravel and asphalt to state and municipal road construction projects, not for general commercial sale of gravel or asphalt. And then number three has been replaced with DHHS and ESD will respond to noise complaints.
Any more comments? Yes, Ms. Prue?
I have maybe one, not to bring up something else, but on state municipal road construction projects, you may want to consider federal, the military bases. So federal may be something we might want to add.
State, federal, state, and municipal.
Okay, we accept it. I accept it.
Any more input? Is there any objection? That passes unanimously. Now, don't escape, I've got a couple of things. Grab your little orange sheet, flip to the last page where we've got, under reports, you'll notice we've updated the committees. And this was basically based on your requests. So if there's anybody that wants to hop onto other committees, be my guest. And I do want to be on the AMATS committee. No, just Pease and Yoshimura. So add me to that.
Art, I'll make the suggestion in front of everybody else that I made to you during the break, was that it occurred to me during the school district presentation that we might want to have a presence on that advisory board.
Yeah, sort of school budget advisory board?
Right.
So if anybody would like to volunteer for that, we can get you on it.
Yeah, I'll volunteer.
Okay.
You can add my name to the West Anchorage District plan.
That way Connie won't feel like she's been surprised.
Okay, West Anchorage, okay. Did somebody else say something else on some other plan? Okay, and then Jim, I'll put you on the school budget advisory thing. And Connie and I attended the first meeting of this AMATS thing. And I guess the big deal out of it is that the committee size has been expanded from something to something. And I don't know if we're really part of it, or we're just party crashers, but anyway, we were there. I think we're party crashers. But I'm going to keep an eye on this thing, because it really has an impact on what's going to happen. And the main thing that they're going to do right now is they're going to combine the two separate transportation plans that they have from Eagle River and from the municipality into one plan. And this is being forced on them basically by the feds. They don't want to see two plans for Anchorage, they want to see one. And so this is going to create a certain amount of grunting and groaning, I'm sure, because there's only a limited pot of money, and everybody wants to make sure that their priorities pop out on top. So I see this as something that's going to be a point, not a big point of contention, but it's going to cause a certain amount of concern, because they're going to have to basically take two separate priority lists and combine them into one and create a priority out of that. You know, the Knick Arm Bridge is still on there. That's going to be a big point of discussion. That's sort of the big elephant in the room. So it's developing. I don't know, Connie, do you have anything else to add to it?
The only thing that I would add is, it's my understanding that the feds are not really happy that the Planning and Zoning Commission sits as the Citizens Advisory Board to AMATS, and that there's been some discussion about making a change there. So I think it is important that we have representation on a regular basis on AMATS. Well, I know that, but I have, I recognize that the feds are unhappy with that situation.
Anyway, and here, what I'm going to do is I'm going to pass out, this is the ruling that basically puts us on the committee. So this is just sort of historical information as to why we sit there.
So Mr. Yoshimura, you and Ms. Yoshimura attended what meeting?
This was the AMATS, wait a minute, I got to read. Long Range Transportation Plan update. This was a?
Okay, I was there for part of the meeting last?
This was last week, I believe.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Yeah, last Wednesday, and you're on the?
Yeah, no, I was there for one, a couple weeks ago, I guess. So I missed you, anyway. It was the same issues, they were talking about, yeah, see? Policy Committee.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, everybody's talking, you know.
So I don't want to overlap or duplicate. I went to the policy committee meeting, and you went to what?
And this was the technical committee.
Okay.
This was the technical committee.
Okay, well, I'll keep trying to hit the policy committee.
Yeah, well, anyway, but we need to cover this to make sure that we know in advance, so that we're not surprised when these things drop on us.
What's the difference between policy and technical?
Composition, the policy committee? Oh, there may be some other things too.
One is the mayor?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I do the minutes for both of those. And the policy committee is the final authority. Technical committee releases drafts and things for comment to the public and makes recommendations to the policy committee.
Yeah.
The policy committee would be DOT commissioner and the mayor?
Yeah, the big guns, yeah.
Those three?
Yeah.
And two state, there are two state representatives, two assembly and the mayor on the policy committee?
Okay.
And the technical committee has people from several different agencies, lots of different agencies.
So anyway, but we need to keep an eye on this, so. And we've also got your stuff for the next week's meeting.
She didn't put it in envelopes, but there's only one item.
So you're going to pass this out now? Okay, well, let's pass this out. Anybody else got anything else we need to, oh, yes.
While Ms. Graves is passing out the items for next week, if you would also keep the items from tonight's meeting that have been postponed to March.
Oops, I've got to go through the dumpster here.
Does anyone, has anyone thought ahead about March 7th? Do you know that you'll be here?
I will not, I will not.
Two absences.
What are we supposed to say?
No.
And one further item then for March? How do you feel about a second meeting on March 14th? A second meeting, March 14th?
There was one, wasn't there? I will be gone.
March 7th is the regular. So how about a second one on March 14th?
I'll be gone also.
It's just the number of cases that are coming in. And some of these postponements, we're not all that certain they're going to make March 7th.
We're kind of at your beck and call.
Kidoki.
Just as long as we've got a quorum. I mean, isn't that getting around towards spring break time or something like that? But you need to keep that in consideration, because people bug out with their kids about that time of the year.
Yes, on 7th, you'll be leaving, and the spring breakers leaving about the 7th and back about the 14th.
Well, you know, we'll do the best we can. If people aren't here, they aren't here. And if we don't have a quorum, we don't have a quorum.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we ready to adjourn? And need a motion. Ms. Yoshimura moved. Somebody, Mr. Prue seconded. Any objection? No objection, we're adjourned. Thank you.
You've got to get on the record, so people know you were here.
So on Monday night, if anyone's going to break those, Mr. Barrett's party people.